Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 18, 2017, regular meeting of the City Council. The meeting will now come to order. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Brookings from the West Covina Unified, or United Methodist Church, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Wu.
Let us pray together. Creator of all that was, that is and that will be, assembled before you are people who call upon you with differing names. Together they call out to you to ask your presence with them as they begin their work. Fill them with a vision of the things that are best for this community and its people. Lead them to listen as much as they want to be heard. Help them to understand as much as they want to be understood. And as the day comes to a close, may they feel a sense of accomplishment, knowing that they have done the very best that they could. We thank you for your presence and your willingness to hear us. Amen.
Madam Assistant City Clerk, will you please call the role of the council?
Councilman Johnson. Councilmember Toma.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem Spence.
Here.
Mayor Warshaw.
Here. Thank you. Madam City Attorney, are there any items to report out of closed session?
At this time, no, Mr. Mayor. There was direction given, but we did recess the closed session and we'll be going back to closed session at the conclusion of this meeting. I don't expect any reportable action, but if there is any, it will be reported out.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of City Council, there are several changes, and I'll try to do them slowly so the public can follow along. First is, Councilmember Toma shared with staff earlier that on the 4/18, 17 minutes, the April 18, 2017 minutes, the vote on the Royal Coaches Agreement, he did vote in the affirmative, and it was reflected that he did not vote in affirmative. So we'll make those changes, and the minutes can be approved as amended with that change. In addition, I see our City Treasurer, Ms. Rosati, is here, so if you could pull item number four, which is the city's investment report, for her to give her, to make a separate report, appreciate that. And then item number seven, which is the expansion of Cortez Park, city staff does not want to move forward with that project at this time, and so we're going to pull that item off the agenda, and we'll bring it back if it's appropriate at a later date. And then on item number nine, if we could pull that as well, that's the agreement with Five Bars. We'll bring that back at your August 15 City Council meeting. The city attorney and staff want to do some additional due diligence and have further discussions with Five Bars before bringing that item back. And then lastly, with regards to item number 25, with the Athens Evergreen, we are going to pull that item, and that will be heard at a special City Council meeting, which will be scheduled for August the 2nd, here in these council chambers at 6:30 PM. So there will be no discussion on the Athens Evergreen this evening.
Yeah. Yeah. On Royal Coaches, I voted no.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure we reflect that with those changes.
Right. Right.
Do you have that, Madam City Clerk? Okay.
All right. So just to confirm, we're pulling seven, nine, and 25.
Correct. So those will not be discussed by the council this evening.
Thank you. And if I could have Nicole come on up. So the month of July has been designated as Parks Make Life Better Month. The purpose of this month is to encourage the community to enjoy the many programs in our city parks and recreational services and activities throughout West Covina Parks and also our recreational programs that contribute to the quality of life for all of our residents, ensuring not only the health of all citizens, but also bringing family fun throughout the entire year. That includes our senior center, to the Cameron Community Center, and Shadow Oak Park. There are lots of opportunities for our residents to enjoy our parks and our recreational program. So with that, if you would like to say a few words, Nicole?
I would just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and for those of you who enjoyed the Fourth of July celebration. And I would like to invite those of you who would like to enjoy country music to head on out to our courtyard this Thursday night, from 6:00 to 9:00 is our summer concert series. Bathrooms will be open, first through third floor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for doing the great job that you've done. And I'm not going to read this whole proclamation, but again, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that Parks Make Life Better, month of July 2017. Thank you. Oh, come on, come on. And if I can have Carter Spruill, who is the President of the San Gabriel Valley NAACP, come forward. And tonight, he has an award presentation, so I will give the mic to him.
Well, I, thank you for having me here this evening. I wanted to invite the City Council, we're having our 53rd anniversary celebration, San Gabriel Valley NAACP, been around for 53 years, and we're going to celebrate on Saturday, August 19th, at the West Covina Senior Center, starting at 11:00 AM. I'd like to invite you, the City Council and all, to come and join us for a little light refreshments and a little celebration. Okay? So I have some flyers here, and Heather Sayers has some more. Yeah. And then on Thursday, October 19th, we're bringing back our Freedom Fund banquet, which we haven't had in several years, and we're going to honor several guests. And our main guest we're going to honor is for the Tuskegee Airmen, so I'm really excited about that. And then I also have a...
And where will that be?
Oh, I'm sorry. It will be Thursday, October 19th, at the Mountain Meadows Golf Course in Pomona, starting at 5:30 for a little mix and mingle, then dinner and award show afterwards.
Great.
Okay? Then if I may, if you indulge me for a second here, I'd like to read this. On this 18th day of July 2017, I, Carter Spruill, President of the San Gabriel Valley Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, would like to congratulate Heather Sayers...
Come on down, Heather.
...on being selected as our 2017 co-presidents' award recipient. For the past several years, you have been very instrumental in helping our branch with putting together many successful events, like our annual Dr. King Celebration and our first-ever youth summit. I want to thank you and the City of West Covina for your continued support and partnership in helping make our branch of the NAACP successful. And upon acceptance, we would like to present you with your award at our Freedom Fund banquet on Thursday, October 19th, at the Mountain Meadows Golf Course in Pomona.
So we're going to have a couple of adjournment motions for tonight. The first one is to honor a West Covina Police Department Reserve. I had known him for quite a few years when I was in our SHOP program. His name was Police Sergeant Larry Wong, and he just recently passed away on, I think it was July 3rd. Larry had a long career with West Covina PV in 1991 as a reserve police officer, and he served in many different capacities. He excelled in everything that he did, and he cared very deeply about the men and women of the West Covina Police Department, as well as all of the residents of West Covina. Please keep Larry's family in your thoughts and prayers. And I think Mayor Pro Tem Spence has one other person?
Yes, I think we should adjourn in memory of Frank Anzalone. Frank passed away on July 7th, 2017. He was born on April 28th in 1930 in Louisiana, and he moved to New Orleans when he was 12. He entered the military when he was 17, and he was a mechanic and navigator, and he flew in the Berlin airlift. He was, after his honorable discharge, he started all-purpose building and became very successful in the mobile home industry. He was an avid animal lover and protector, and he left behind his wife of 37 years, Nancy, who many of you know from various service efforts here in West Covina, and Sister Connie in New Orleans, and says he worked hard, he played hard, and lived life with zest. And so I'd like to adjourn in Frank Anzalone's memory as well.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else who has an adjournment? If not, Madam Assistant City Clerk, will you please make sure that these adjournment motions at the end of the, are noted at the end of the meeting?
Will do.
Thank you. We'll now move forward with oral communications. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to complete a yellow speaker card, which is right in the front of the entrance to the City Hall. You will have five minutes to speak, and tonight's first speaker will be John Schumaker. John will be followed by Dennis Wright.
Thankfully, for all the changes to the agenda, a few things were taken off. One of the things I speak on is 13, the lease for the former Sunset Field. You know, why isn't it sold yet? You know, I guess this is a nice way to not have to worry about any options, or the city finally getting fed up and saying, you know, this is taking forever, we're taking it back. Again, $1,700, wow, that really helps the city tremendously, for that desperate. You know, what should be in there is that if it's torn down and paved over, and they don't finish closing the deal with, at the end of the next option, that they have to rebuild it back, and it's done with. I think about a year ago, I was standing up here saying, a year from now, it won't be, it won't be a done deal, and looks like I'm right on that one. The only question is now, is if my original comment of three years will come anywhere near being correct. You know, again, it's just amazing that every time we do a deal, we never seem to quite come out on the top end of this deal, you know, in any way, shape, or form. It's just amazing. 18, the professional services agreement. I'd like to know, you know, is there anything that we can kind of do ourselves in this city? Seems like we have professional service agreements for everything under the sun. You know, is there anything that our staff can do? I know if I come to City Hall to pay my business license fee, I can't pay it here. I have to make sure I go up, you know, get on the internet and pay it that way, they won't take the money here, and they won't even say, well, we'll do it for you. You know, so, I mean, that's great customer service, you know? Unlike when I called the, at work, I had to call the City of San Clemente because for some reason I misplaced our business license. And the young lady who answered the phone, very nice, and I said, I misplaced our business license. You know, and she goes, what's the company name? I told her, and she had it to me about that quick, before I could finish asking the question, she had already answered it. Here, you show up to pay a business license, you're told, oh, we can't help you. Oh, there is one thing that I want to make sure I understood when I looked at the budget. During the budget process, there was a lot of talk about a $6.1 million deficit that magically disappeared. But I noticed on one, one item that was part of the last budget, it said the 2006-2017 amended budget was $65.4 million. How'd it get to $65.4 million? I know there's been a lot of transfers and things like that, but you know, one of the things I've always thought, that when you transferred, I was taking money from the pencil account to the pen account, not from the reserve account to spend more. And the other thing I noticed too was, first of all, I'm trying to figure out what, when it comes to personnel, what materials are, you know, in some of the ways, the descriptions, so it's hard to figure out. But I noticed salaries in every single department increased. And what really was amazing was when I looked at the Fire Department, it increased 10% in, we're laying off, what, about 20% of the staff? How do you do that? How do you go from, I believe it was about $16 million to $17.6, something along those lines? And aren't we firing or laying off 13 people? You know, I just don't get how, we're going broke, and all these expenses just keep going up, going up, going up. I know it's a bad thing to say, but in my career, I've worked for a lot of companies that were having problems, one of the reasons I was brought in. You know, if we just stopped pay raises for two years, a lot of our problems disappear. But you know, it's the type of thing that we just keep adding to it. We're broke, so let's fire people and give the people who stay raises. I don't get the logic behind that. I, I just don't get it. You know, so, you know, hopefully someday I'll get an answer, you know, if I'm wrong, okay, great, but I want to know how the approved amended budget for 1617 is $65.4 million? You know, if that's true, did you guys realize that it was actually $5 million higher than you had approved? You got to start questioning, if that's the case, start questioning the people who were giving you that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dennis Wright from SCORE, and Dennis will be followed by Mary Lou Stocking.
Good evening. Actually, I'm here tonight to say thanks, on behalf of SCORE, and on behalf of the East San Gabriel Valley SCORE chapter, and on behalf of our clients. And not long ago, Paulina Morales asked for numbers relating to our partnership, SCORE's partnership with the City of West Covina, dating back over your past two fiscal years. And she wanted to know how many small business owners, and those who aspire to be, had been mentored here at City Hall, how many workshops had been conducted here, and what the attendance was. And I provided her with those numbers. However, those numbers don't tell the whole story. The fact of the matter is, our partnership with West Covina has actually done quite a lot for the East San Gabriel Valley as a whole. And I'd like to make you aware of that fact tonight. West Covina was the first city that we partnered with when we established an East San Gabriel Valley SCORE chapter, and that was back in October of 2015. And having joined forces, if you will, with the City of West Covina, well, it actually helped us open doors elsewhere. We now have increased the number of locations where we provide services in the East San Gabriel Valley by seven more. In addition, our workshop programs benefited. We now do workshops at five additional locations. But most importantly, throughout the East San Gabriel Valley, business owners and those who aspire to be, including those here in West Covina, have benefited. Now let me just share a couple of quick numbers for you. This is throughout the, throughout the East San Gabriel Valley, 605 Freeway to the LA County Line, east of Pomona. In your fiscal 2016, we mentored 365 business owners and folks that aspire to be. We did 18 workshops, and the attendance was 368. In your fiscal 2017, here in West Covina and our other locations combined, mentoring rose to 300, excuse me, 439, a 20% increase. Workshops increased to 86, which is a 378% increase, and attendance, 1,732, a 370% increase. Now that includes work that we're doing also at Azusa Pacific, University of Laverne, and Cal Poly Pomona. In West Covina, the numbers that I gave Paulina, some of the numbers were a little tough for us to grasp, us to get at, because of our system, which is undergoing some change. But we determined that in your fiscal 2016, a total of 28 West Covina residents, and not necessarily business residents, but by ZIP code residential, 28 West Covina residents came to SCORE and received help. The following year, fiscal 2017, it was 33. Now, Price Waterhouse Cooper does an annual survey for SCORE. Those numbers go to the SBA, and they're later reported to Congress. That's where our funding comes from. Based on their formula for doing these surveys, and talking, actually talking to people by phone and electronically, they've determined, and the numbers that they're reporting, is that SCORE's activity at the East San Gabriel Valley helped to start 70 new businesses last year. So that's, that's, we're pretty proud of those numbers. So I'm here to say thanks to you. I'm also, well, I'm thankful for your commitment, not only to, to supporting SCORE, but your commitment to economic development, and your commitment to the success of small businesses. And in particular, I wanted to thank Chris Freeland again, who was instrumental in bringing us to West Covina in the first place, because this is where we got our start. I'm also very appreciative of the fact that Councilman Toma and Mayor Warshaw saw the value in partnering with SCORE, and were instrumental in helping us establish our presence here, and authorizing the use of city facilities to do what it is we do. And I'm also very appreciative of the, the help and the support that we get from Paulina Morales and her staff, which makes it possible to do what we do on a regular basis. So, thank you, thank all of you.
And Dennis, I wanted to thank you and all the other volunteers of SCORE that spend their time without any money that comes into them individually. You've been a very big help to West Covina. And for those of you out there who have a small business or thinking of starting one, please take advantage of SCORE. These are all professionals who have, who are either still in business in one form or the other, or have retired from that, and are willing to give you their help and their advice to make you successful. So again, Dennis, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mary Lou, and Mary Lou will be followed by Angie Gillingham.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lou Stocking. I've lived in West Covina. My husband and I moved in in 1965 with our six children, and we lived near Cortez Park, and considering the four boys, we spent our life at Cortez Park with football and baseball. Loved that park. I decided at the beginning of this year that we would have a family reunion, and because our family is over 50 people now, we couldn't fit anybody's house or their yard, so I decided to have it at Cortez Park, went down and rented one of the pavilions, paid my $120, and have been planning it. Well, last Sunday, on my way back from grocery shopping, I decided I would stop at the park and just kind of analyze things to make some plans, because we're having it August 5th. And so as I, I parked outside the restrooms, and as I'm walking up toward the pavilion, I thought, well, I don't know who was here Saturday, but it should have been a bunch of slobs, because there's a lot of trash on the tables and on the benches and all around the grounds. Well, as I got closer, the things on the bench began to move, and people sat up, or ladies sat up, and then another somebody moved, and I thought, okay, I'm by myself, I'm not going to, you know, do anything. So I turned around and went back, went to the restrooms, and I thought, well, I've got my kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids that need to use the restroom, so something said, go check the restroom. Well, as soon as I walked through the women's restroom door, I didn't know whether to throw up or what. It was outrageous, it is the filthiest, horrible thing I have ever seen in my life. The bath, the sink was full of stuff, papers and water all over the floor. Went into the urinal in the women's restroom, and it was full of urine and paper. Went into the stall, it was full of feces, urine, and paper as well, all over the floor. Then I began to look around, and I don't think it's been painted in 60 or 70, maybe 100 years, I'm not sure, because that's how it looks. I don't understand, this park has a football field, a baseball field, and a playground, and we expect our children, meaning all of these people that live in West Covina, we expect our children, and that's geared toward children, we expect them to use this kind of restroom? Outrageous. I would rather take my kids to the bushes, and I would. You wouldn't want your kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, or... You wouldn't want your kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews or loved ones going into that restroom, believe me. And I understand that men's restroom is the same, only worse, because I sent somebody. This is Sunday, so I'm thinking, okay. So, yesterday, my husband on the way back from the doctor's appointment, I've said, I'm going to show you the restroom, just to show you. Thinking, maybe it might be clean. No, it wasn't. It was the same. I don't understand, with the taxes we pay and the fact that I had to pay $120 to rent tables, why, nobody has time or any energy or money to go clean restrooms? I mean, it is as though you're cleaning a Taj Mahal, or cleaning rooms, a couple of rooms. And if they're done consistently, which I clean my bathroom consistently, doesn't kill me. So, people who are being paid should be able to do that. And if we're expanding Cortez, please, do something with the restrooms. And I would just like to add one more thing. I noticed it how ironic that I happened to come and present this, a day we're proclaiming July as parks make a better life? Right? Well, I would like to add one thing like that. Parks make a better life, providing you don't have to use a restroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Gillingham. Okay, thank you, Angie. And our next speaker will be Carol Muller, and Carol will be followed by Jerry Potrus.
Thank you. Good evening to all of you. I'm here on a non-agenda item, and I have to tell you, I'm kind of nervous, I never did this before. I live in the Shadow Oak area, and I live on kind of the main thoroughfare from Shadow Oak to Woodgate, Adrian Drive. And we have a real problem there, and I don't think it's just our neighborhood. We have hotels. People are renting their houses out, bed by bed, and we have no parking on our street anymore. If someone comes to my house, they have to park around the corner and up the street, a couple blocks away, because all of the parking places are taken. On Fridays, which is street sweeping day, they run the street sweepers basically down the center of the road, because all the cars are parked there. They park in front of driveways, they park in front of all our homes. It's gotten to the point where, and I know this goes on, they rent out beds in each of the bedrooms. On Natalie Street, which is a condo area, kind of more down by Azusa area, I know a person who lived in one of these, she paid $500 for her bed. In the same bedroom, someone else paid $500 for a bed, someone she didn't even know. Other bedrooms, it was a three-bedroom house, other two beds in the other bedroom, and then a master bedroom where there was a family, a man, a woman and a child. Downstairs, they rented out the couch, the sofa, for $200, and then someone slept on the floor. And parking there is a mess as well, because they all have cars. I spoke with a gentleman who was parked in front of my house one day when I went to get the mail. He was from Utah, and he was, I asked him, are you a homeowner here? He said, no, I'm just renting a room. And that's what I have to say about the Shadow Oak area. And like I said, I think it does go on other places, but it's really, really prevalent. Three houses. Two houses here, the one in the middle is not, but he's a mechanic, and he brings his cars from his shop and parks them on our street as well. So, I don't know what you guys can do about it, but it's getting out of control. And thank you, and happy birthday, Mike.
Our next speaker is Jerry, and Jerry will be followed by Jim Griffith.
Good evening. I know from previous meeting that coyotes are going to get on your agenda at some point. They're almost at my house now. One of my neighbors that lives right on the Covina, West Covina border, her backyard, she had the pair that's going around our city sunning at her swimming pool this week. And anyway, I appreciate what Mayor Pro Tim Spence has posted on some of the Nextdoor stuff, it's been helpful, where we can report and things. But the one issue that came up this week prompted why I'm here. I'd like the council city hall to consider, and it's based on a Nextdoor posting, apparently if we want to add two-foot fencing extensions to concrete walls, it's apparently a very expensive variance process. And since coyotes can jump six-foot walls very easy, I'd like the city, I'm asking, if you just look at seeing if you could ease up in any way just to make it easier for residents who want to try and keep their animals safe and their kids safe on this jumping stuff, so that maybe people, I don't want sloppy stuff in the neighborhood like two-by-fours with chicken wire, that was on Vincent not too long ago, okay? But if we could work together so that we could try and keep the coyotes out of our backyards and our pets and little kids safe, just by looking at what the ordinance is and if it can be tweaked so it's a little more user-friendly, I think a lot of us would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Our next speaker is Jim, and Jim will be followed by Alvin Love.
I was going to speak on item 25, and since you left on that.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker is Alvin Love, and Alvin will be followed by Elsie Messman.
Good evening, council members. I have a couple of items I'd like to address. The traffic committee meeting that was on June 21st. I talked to someone in the public works, and I was told that letters would be sent out to every residence in the conclave that's fed by Roseway. That's one way in, one way out, there's three streets there, Barbara, Roseway and Crumley. We received no letters. That's why there was no one at the meeting. I do like that, based on the above, the committee recommends the installation of keep-clear messages and/or signs. Do we know exactly what it's going to be? I would like that answered. But we should have been, the residents of that development should have been notified where we could have attended the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elsie Messman, and Elsie will be followed by Sandra Delahoussaye.
Good evening, mayor, council staff and everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina for 46 years. I had to cross out also a couple of items that I had on my list. I'm going to start with agenda number 13, the lease agreement with Citrus Valley Health Partners, another budget amendment. Why are we allowing them to have a lease for six months at $1,700 a month so they can demolish existing facilities for parking? Did they not agree to buy the property, or are we being taken for suckers? I'm beginning to think the latter. Agenda number 16 regarding the police officer's bike team, another budget amendment, only this one dates back to July 1st, 2016, ending June 30th, 2017. Something doesn't sit well with me on this item. Last year's budget is over. What kind of games are we playing now? Agenda number 14, another budget amendment regarding premiums for insurance. Agenda 15, another budget agreement, amendment I should say, regarding police explorers. Agenda 17, another budget amendment regarding oil payment block grant. Do we have a balanced budget, or do we have an amended budget? I don't know how many residents know, but I called the city last month and left a message on a staff, with a staff employee that said his hours are from 8:00 to 5:00. That tells me that City Hall was only open 32 hours a week to the public. I have heard a few people complain, but when the three council members voted against a 40-hour week, five days a week, I began to wonder why three council members were against this. Are they more concerned about staff or the 106,000 residents who they are supposed to represent? And I think you know who you are. We now need an agreement for onward engineering for residents' street program. Do we not have an engineer and staff to do that? Now, we have a consultant for preparing a report for transportation impact fee study. I guess our city manager will agree with anything. Every month, we add another consultant service, why? When we have to approve April 17 minutes on a July meeting over three months late, I have a problem with that. I think we have three people in the clerk's office. If they can't handle it, then maybe we should look for someone that can. And we have heard time and time again, shop in West Covina. When we see no improvements in our parks, streets are not being paved, nothing is being done on the south side, it's time for us to shop someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sandra Delahoussaye, followed by Wenwen Zhang.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'm Sandra Delahoussaye, resident of West Covina. I'm speaking on item 13. I am not a member of the board or anything like that at Citrus Valley, but I am a volunteer, have been for 10 years. I don't know anything about the negotiation, about the $1,700, but I would think whoever negotiated that amount would have done it in good faith. If that wasn't adequate, it should have been dealt with at the bargaining table. So, the $1,700 would be standing, I'm assuming. The reason for needing Sunset, if in fact the contract is going forward, there is no parking. Anyone who's gone to Citrus Valley, Queen of the Valley campus knows it's almost impossible. And this isn't, we're not talking about people coming from out of town. This hospital is basically ours. If our hospital here does not do well, it bodes on our city. This is the number one employer of people here, as well as people who are ill coming there. I know many of you don't have insurance plans that would have you go to Citrus Valley or to Queen of the Valley. The thing is, though, if you have a heart attack, something happens to you and you're down, the ambulance will take you here. We're noted here at Queen of the Valley for stroke nationwide, so that's where you'd go first, once you're stabilized. Then you would go to Kaiser, Good Sam or wherever. But you start here. So, we've got to make sure that people can get to you. So, parking, it might not sound like a big deal, but that's what Sunset is about, parking. Next item is a bike patrol. I was concerned about that, that we're paying overtime after the fact. I thought it was a wonderful idea to have bike patrol, but that whole year, I saw no one on a bike. And if they're out or had been out doing whatever it was with the homeless, I don't know what they would do with them once they found them. They weren't going to put them on the bike and take them somewhere. So, I don't know what they were patrolling. That's a big wonderment to me. And the fact that they're getting overtime because they were doing such a good job at doing whatever it was, that's raised, for me, a red flag. Lastly, my biggest concern and support is on districting of West Covina. I support it wholeheartedly. I've come from two previous cities who had it. The cohesiveness of the city and the different things, like the last speaker was talking the one before, about folks using their home for hotels and the cars on their lot and what have you. If there's a council member in that particular district, that's who you get on the phone to. You can jump on their back right away, look, Joe, Mary, Harry, whoever, I've got a problem. You don't have to get on the phone line here through City Hall, go through a menu and then end up having the person you're trying to get off on vacation, off on maternity leave, because I've been through that. And with other cities who do have districts, they have community policing, and I'm a strong proponent of that. I think once the community sees police cars going around, this is a great deterrent. I live at the end of West Covina where we rarely see a police car just cruising around, and that shouldn't be. They can't walk the beat, this is too large an area, but they can cruise around. So, where they're cruising, I don't know. It's sort of like the bike patrol. When I first came here 12 years ago, I saw guys on motorcycles. Wonderful. I said, great, this is a wonderful thing. I have not seen in the last 10 years of officer on a motorcycle. I don't know if we've done away with them, or they have certain routes that they're not, you know, attending to the rest of us. But I live in an area that I would like to see a district person that I could have knock on my door and I could talk to them or go to their home, and I support districts for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Our next speaker is Wenwen Zhang, followed by Birdie Espezia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Washa, city council members and all residents and everyone in the audience. My name is Wenwen Zhang, and I'm the West Covina library manager. Thank you for the opportunity for me to make announcement of upcoming, some of the library programs. So, Saturday next week, July 29th, we will have a bow wow mu hip-de-hop tour at the library. You're all welcome to come meet and greet the stars of this amazing tour, featuring dogs, cats and rabbits of various breeds and colors. The event will begin at 10 o'clock to 1:00, and there will be onsite adoption opportunities. And this program is sponsored by the County of Los Angeles Department of Animal Care and Control. So, at 11:00 on the same day, we will have a special story time about pets and animals, followed by another activity. Well, safe driving is always very, very important for everyone. The library will hold a driving tips for seniors seminar on Saturday, August 12th at 2:00 p.m. At the seminar, the California Highway Patrol will teach you secrets of how to maintain safe driving skills to avoid accidents as you and your, someone you love gets older. On the same Saturday, August 12th, the Friends of the West Covina Library will hold their second Saturday book sale. The book sale will begin at 10:00 to 3:00. This is a fundraising event. All the money the Friends of the West Covina Library raised at book sales is to support a library, the libraries to supplement collections and programs. Thank you so much, Friends of the West Covina Library. You are the best, we love you. Another special program on Wednesday, August 23rd at 3:00 p.m., we will have a back-to-school science fun, science fun event at the library. This program is designed specifically for children ages six and up. So, children, come on to the library and fun and learn how to create your own objects that will fly in the library's wing tunnel. All programs at the libraries are free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Wenwen. Our next speaker is Birdie Espezia, followed by Frederick Sykes.
Good evening, mayor, council member and staff. I'm here in regard to the Ballpark Animal Shelter. And of course, I was the only one back in the day that sat here till 2:00 in the morning begging to get the contract. I've been here for 45 years. We had to deal with San Gabriel Humane Society, but people did not want to drive over there when their animals got lost, because they didn't want to bother with it. I don't know what happened, but in between, I tried to get Ballpark at the county inn and council members didn't want it. So, we went to Pomona Humane Society. Their contract was exactly one year, because they did something to me that, you're lucky I'm standing here. Anyway, getting to Ballpark, my son is 43 years old. We've been adopting pets. We've been adopting pets since he was born. All our cats and dogs have always come out of Ballpark. That's why I'm a great supporter. I was a great supporter. We were there July fifth, sixth, and seventh. He was trying to adopt a dog. He finally qualified to adopt the dog because they have to go through an interview depending on the dog breed. When he went in Friday to pay for the dog, it's on the internet, if you're a military veteran, you get a discount, which I thought was nice. Well, they didn't give it to my son because he lives in West Covina. And of course, I was there, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and when I go in, they just about die. And I don't think that's right. To me, that's discrimination. Why is it all the other cities here, what is it, Claremont, Glendora, La Buente, Sandy, Miss Laverne, get the discount for military, West Covina doesn't? I want somebody to check into that. And the sad part is, we're there on Friday, and the lines are there, people get there at nine in the morning, and we're there early, no parking. It's ten fifteen in the morning, and they're supposed to open their doors at ten. I go up to a worker that's coming in, and I go, excuse me, don't you open up at ten? She goes and comes back, well, our staff isn't here. Well, the people in line went ballistic. Our tax dollars are paid for this, and they don't have to come to work on time? That was really sad. So you guys are what, civil employees over here? Well, if you don't want to come to work tomorrow at ten A M., you don't have to. Taxpayers will take care of it. But no, it's sad. And yet, there's no parking. I've heard so many complaints for three days there from West Covina residents. And here, I'm embarrassed because I fought for this contract. National Night Out, I really think code enforcement and animal control should be involved with National Night Out. Last year, I've been begging to get an officer from the animal shelter to come out, because we have a lot of dogs on our property. Nobody would return my phone calls, no one. I even went down there and gave them the apartment numbers of all the apartments that have dogs. Didn't come. West Covina, the shelter has not even checked for license or rabies in our city for a good eleven years. Why do I know this? I have a friend that's got a dog pushing seventeen. She hasn't paid rabies shots or license since the dog was two. So that tells you. And the dog's right there at the gate, the dog walks, and everybody goes by. I know for a fact that they have not checked our city. And to adopt the dog is a hundred and fifty dollars. Maybe they should go to these homes and get the revenue. They need to do that. I'm very disappointed. I've called the director today, hoping that somebody can come out to talk to our, you know, residents about the licensing and the rabies shots, because rabies shots are very important to have. You get bit by a dog severity, and that dog's going to have shots. You're going to be in a lot of pain. But I saw here in the newspaper, the Tribune, that they're supposed to start going out canvassing to the cities I just mentioned, and also to our city. I'm very disappointed in Ballpark Animal Shelter. Like I said, all my animals have come from there. My dogs have given us anywhere from thirteen to sixteen years. My cats have lived to be twenty-three. But I don't have the time to explain about Pomona. But when I came up here, I was, you can go back and get that tape, I was the only resident, only resident, that spoke very highly on Ballpark Animal Shelter. And Frank Andrews, the director at the time, I called him, I says, be there. He goes, ma'am, they will not take our contract. We have been trying to get into your city. And here I was the only one, and now it's, you know, and people there say, well, you're the one that begged for this. I like their hours because they're open on weekends. And that's important for you to go adopt the dog. A lot of people work. You want to go see if your pet's there, you can go after work. Pomona, you cannot go past five P M. My son, when the Navy SEALs, when his dog went missing, he came out. They gave him permission from Coronado Island to come out. He got to the, to the office at ten minutes to five. You know what the employee told him at Pomona? Oh, I'm going home in ten minutes. I'm not starting paperwork. So I had to pay another day for the dog to be there. So I'm hoping that somebody checks into this. I want to know what's going on, and why won't the manager there at the Ballpark Animal Shelter talk to the public? I've even called the Tribune. I'm trying to get ahold of one of the reporters there, because I want to do a story with them. So, but I'm depending on you, Mr. Military. I want to know why my son couldn't get that discount.
We'll check into that for you.
Okay. The military discount.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Fred Sykes, followed by Lola Finley.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, thirty-nine-year resident of West Covina, retired deputy sheriff, former mayor of West Covina, and currently I'm a member of the West Covina Oversight Board. On the consent calendar regarding the traffic committee meeting, agenda item three, please approve the following traffic safety measures, starting with what Mr. Love talked about at Roseway Street and Sunset Avenue. I have personally driven to that community, and it is a community of approximately single-family homes. They have a cul-de-sac development of houses there where there's only one way in and one way out. And when you leave during peak traffic hours, it's pretty dangerous to try to turn left because there's no traffic signal there. So whatever you can do to advance that safety aspect of that intersection would be appreciated. I think that there's possibly some resolution to look at signage painted on the street and other signs posted. So whatever you can do would be greatly appreciated there. Also, in the south side of town, on the commission meeting was the marked sidewalk, I should say marked crosswalk on Shadow Drive between Stephanie Street and the main driveway into Shadow Park. A marked crosswalk has been needed at that location for more than four decades. Shadow Drive connects Amar Road to Nogales Street. And since the nineteen seventies, Shadow Drive has gained two stop signs to slow traffic between Amar and Nogales Street. And it has red, red signs at Woodgate Drive, stop signs at Woodgate Drive, and Gemini Street. And now we're asking for a much-needed marked crosswalk to improve pedestrian safety between Stephanie Drive and the main entrance to the park on the, on Shadow Drive. And also with the advanced technology in automobiles, the cars are pretty much faster than ever. And I have oftentimes seen people that are drag racing and speeding on Shadow Drive between the stop sign at Gemini Street to the traffic signal at Nogales Street. And moving on to Athens, since we pulled it, I had to stand down on a lot of things that I wanted to bring to the attention of the city council. So at this time, I'll just simply ask for if we can get an update on the city's current laws and policy on the open contract bidding process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lola Finley. And Lola will be followed by, I think it's Armando Sanchez. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, staff, neighbors. I haven't had the opportunity to speak about this, so I just wanted to say good choice on our interim chief of police, Richard Bell. I have an affinity for him. When we first started having issues in our neighborhood, he was the detective who came. And when he found out I was a neighborhood watch lead, he came and contacted me and our neighbors, and when we had the meeting, he came. So it's good choice on that. I know he'll do a great job. Regarding agenda item three, I hope you guys agree with the city engineer or the consultant, whoever did the assessment. I definitely agree with that assessment. We do need a crosswalk on Shadow Park. It's definitely dangerous. It's almost impossible to get across safely. Regarding agenda seven, I know it was pulled, but I'm going to go ahead and speak on it. The sale of Sunset Park, those funds were supposed to be used for the park when people voted for him. I voted against it. I don't think we did the proper bidding on it, so I was against selling the park. But since it was sold, I think the fund should be used on a park in that area. You know, I feel like it's, they're going to be in the same situation as Shadow residence. We never have money for the city for Shadow Park. We're constantly being told, last council, this council, we don't have enough money. But you guys, my answer is, save the money and then buy the park in that area or buy whatever it is we need to do, like for instance, the restrooms, the parking lot. I know we're getting closer and closer, but if you guys keep on spending the money, you're not going to have enough money to buy, purchase a park, land in that area for those residents. We took something from them, and they should have, get something equal or better. Let me see, what else? You know, another park that I want to bring to the attention is Ginrich Park where I live. Ginrich Park hasn't had anything new put in there. We have the original asphalt and basketball court since they were built. We have a new playground many years ago, and we have new wood chips, but everything we have is because the state required you to do it. We have nothing new. So hopefully, we can get that asphalt uplifted and cement down and a new basketball, our basketball courts done. Also, I'm against the purchase of, I know this was pulled, but I may not be able to make it, Cortez Park. I really don't think we should be buying any property until we give the park back to the city residents who lost their park. I just think that, A, the amount you guys are paying, I don't know who does your bidding and who does your negotiation, but that person, you guys should get a consultant for, because we keep on getting ripped off. I mean, we didn't put the bid out for Sunset Park. Now that property was being sold for one price, we're still overpaying for the price. Closing costs, we're asking twenty-five thousand. I don't know where you're paying twenty-five thousand for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar property, but if that's the case, I want to be in that business, because that is way overexceed. And I know, because I just purchased a million-dollar property and I paid ten thousand dollars, so I don't know where we come with the twenty-five-thousand-dollar assessment. So in regarding to, I brought the closing costs, agenda item twenty-five was pulled, so we'll wait till that comes up. Citrus Valley, again, I don't know who came up with that seventeen hundred dollars, but I tell you what, I have a one-bedroom for sixteen fifty. Again, can you rip me out of place? Because I need someone to live for seventeen hundred. I don't know who does the negotiation, but you guys really need to start looking, find a consultant that can negotiate for you guys. And I'm with Mr. Shoemaker on that. Who's to say that once they tear it down, this is going to go on and on and on? Apparently, we said we're supposed to close in a year, and it's keeps on dragging on, it's dragging on. I don't think we should do anything with that property. I understand that Queen of the Valley needs parking, according to this earlier speaker, but you know what? I'm a resident, I'm the taxpayer. You should look after me. You should look after my tax dollars, and so I can, so you can afford to, A, buy the park that was taken, B, build a restroom at Shadow Park, and C, so we can take care of other necessaries within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Sanchez, and he will be followed by Alfred Williams.
Hello. Thank you, council and members, my resident members here. This is an off-agenda item. I go down from Mount Sac, coming past Mount Sac, down the hill on Grand, and I don't know who's, there's trees that are in the center, so that's on Grand, all the way from like the apex of the hill down to, I think that's Holt, and then it's Gary. But the trees that are on the Covina sign are very overhanging, and it's very treacherous if we get another rain and some of, you know, they're big eucalyptus in the center, and I don't know if we can, we need to negotiate with the other cities, maybe collaborate and get some of those, but some of those trees are on private properties, too. So I would, I would ask you guys to drive down there some nights and just take a look, because it's, I know that in, what was it, in Huntington Beach where a eucalyptus tree fell on a lady and it killed her, and then the next day, the city had, you know, I think it was in Irvine or Huntington Beach, and they just tore out the trees because of litigation. So I would just, maybe your public works can go down there, and if it's Covina sign or the residence, maybe we can do a little trimming, because they're, some of them are overhanging, really, it's like going under a bridge. So that was my concern on that. It's on Grand, from the apex of the hill down to going towards the ten.
Yeah, I happen to live right on Grand and Holt, and that actually happens to be L.A. County on that side, so we don't have control, but we can, we can, we can talk to them and see what they can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker cards, but is there anyone else that would like to speak? Oh, Alfred, I'm sorry.
My name is Alfred Williams. I'm a over-forty-year resident of West Covina. Yeah, I had a few things that I was concerned about, and one of them was item seven, which was the park, I think, kind of a dumb idea, because it looked like we were creating another sunset. But that's not on the agenda tonight, but it's something that needs to be thought of. It's on the cul-de-sac. I don't know how many people on that cul-de-sac is going to complain, because you're creating a thoroughfare, buddy. But anyway, also, I want to talk about item twenty-three, which is a district. We have, I asked in the report here some things that kind of bothered me.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, that's a public hearing item.
Oh, yeah. With that, you'll get a chance to speak when we bring that one, that item up.
I would like to just bring it up now so that it's, maybe that they, I want to, so that they can answer some questions.
Well, we wouldn't be able to answer any questions until public comment on that.
Okay. Did I get another chance there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The other one is item twenty-four, where you're talking about unmanned aerial vehicles. These, the federal government has quite a few rules that are already there, but I notice in some of the things that you're proposing, the one, there's one that says UAV operators should not fly over schools, sports events, malls, large public gatherings, and government facilities. I think something needs to be answered there, and in all of these, two of these, other two others, prohibition of recording, photographing, transmitting images in persons of private property in locations where a reasonable exception of privacy exists is included in the category of, somebody is mispronouncing that, of private real property. And then the restrictions on recreational UAV operations during emergency conditions. And I think all of those need to be added, a comment that there should be exceptions that are granted by, sometimes there are photography personnel, even private citizens that can be given permission to either go to a private party or private residence, real estate people sometime maybe. So there need to be, on those, at least those three, the exception that it can be granted access to fly UAVs over these areas if necessary. And the, the other thing is with Athens, about, there was twenty-five, which was pulled, a lot of people, I think we need to change that and stop calling it a twenty-five-year rolling contract to a never-ending contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else willing, wishing to speak? If not, I will close public comments, and we're going to take a five-minute break and... What was that? Right. Right. Mr. City Manager, do you have any additional comments to add to any of the issues raised during public comment tonight?
Just a few. If I can, let me have Ms. Brezian talk real quick about animal care and control. She did talk to Birdy, but we'll share the rest of the information for the public so that they're aware as well.
As far as the recent article that Birdy mentioned, there are some irregularities that don't match up and I can only assume that that has to do with the county contracting with multiple agencies under Title 10. And if cities adopted Title 10 in its entirety, some of what is reported in that article could be valid, but for West Covina, that's not all true. Our licensing fees are a little bit different than the county. In addition, we did adopt back in March, or April, I'm sorry, April 18th, we did adopt the fee schedule for the county, or I should say for animal control, which included the veteran discount. The veteran discount was not listed on our city fee schedule because that option was not originally available to us, so I don't know what changed with communication from the county in the time between when we signed the agreement and in past years, I guess it wasn't available or it wasn't offered. I don't know how that came to be. But nonetheless, I've reached out to Birdy and she's going to get me back the information to make sure that she is credited and she got that discount or will get the discount. As far as moving forward with animal license canvassing, that is something that was approved as part of the adoption of the budget and we will be, I just confirmed this in the last couple of days with the county, we will be having a vaccination clinic and a licensing clinic as a joint event here on Saturday, I believe that's Saturday, August 20th, or is that a Sunday? August 20th, and I will confirm date, we don't have the times exactly yet, but it will be a full day available to the community so that they can come out and get their licenses and their rabies vaccinations and have no penalty. When canvassing starts, which will be September 2nd, that is a Saturday, the canvassing will include door-to-door and it's, it's going to start in specific zip codes and they'll fan out and do the entire community. There will not be two- to three-year back penalties. It will be the license fee plus the field enforcement fee of $40. So, the rumors that people are having $1,000 bills and such of redeeming their dogs, I can't speak on those specific issues because I haven't heard of that happening, but that would be impound fees and care fees over multiple days, including back penalty, and I don't know if they're West Covina residents. So, I have reached out to Birdy and I will continue to work with the county. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, here's a few other items. First, with regards to Mr. Shoemaker, I think he was mistaken with regards to the adoption of the city budget. I think that the $5 million delta he's talking about happens to be related to the CIP projects, which is General Fund Dollars, which is the construction of Glendora Avenue. So, we are projecting that there'll be a $10 million bond that would be potentially issued in this fiscal year with $5 million being utilized in fiscal year 1718 and the other probably being used in 1819. So, I believe that's the word, the $5 million delta. With regards to the $6 million mystery deficit that appeared and disappeared, as we shared at all the different budget meetings, we told people how we got to the 6.1 million and then the efforts that the City Council and the city staff took with new revenues and expenditure cuts in order to close that gap. With regards to budget amendments that Ms. Mesmen keeps bringing up or brought up this evening, that's the right way of doing business. We hadn't been doing budget amendments and cities are supposed to be doing budget amendments to keep track and to publicly disclose when we're doing any kind of new revenues or expenditures that were not budgeted for in the coming year. And so, for example, tonight we have on the City Council an item on the bicep insurance. There's a budget amendment because we have projections of what the insurance for the city is going to be. We get that bill from bicep and we have to pay for it. That comes out of one of the other special funds, so we need to do a budget amendment to transfer money from one fund to another or to, from the fund balance in order to pay these premiums. That is an effort and a method that the auditors wish to see, that the city had not been doing in the past, that the city is putting in process so you can keep track of any transaction that shows money coming and going from the city. Another one happens to be, we talked about the overtime for the police officers. That is another budget amendment because we received a grant. We weren't expecting that grant. So, therefore, that's an additional monies that the city receives, so we have to do a budget amendment showing the revenues coming in and an expenditure budget amendment showing that the money is going to be utilized for that program. The reason it was a budget amendment for fiscal year 1617 is the program has just received funding in 1617. This, by putting this additional grant with the original grant, it keeps all the money together, so when, in 1718 begins, which is now, all that money is transferred over together and can be utilized all at once. The bike patrol program has not begun. They're currently putting together the plan for the officers and seeking recruitment of those officers, and so hopefully we'll have them out on patrol in the next couple of months. Sunset Field, I can talk about that. Let's, Council wishes to pull that item for a separate discussion? No? Just to address it real quickly, there's a couple different reasons that, and I see Mr. Shoemaker is gone, but the reason we, it's been delayed to sell the property is the city is trying to sell the property the legal way. In the past, the city has been criticized for not selling property legally and this, we are being, not necessarily being required, it's the right thing to do when you sell property. You're supposed to do an environmental clearance. The hospital has to go through their park, their master plan for the new hospital. They have to do an environmental plan for that new master plan, which includes the property they wish to acquire. That is the legal and that is the right thing to do. And so, it has been delayed, but they still are buying the property from the city. There's been criticism about the $1,700. The reason that dollar amount was established is that was the highest value in rental income that that park made when we had it being rented out to the public, to any of the sports groups. So, that is why, how we established the $1,700 because that was the value that the city was receiving on the best of times. Okay? The additional, by having the hospital lease it and make improvements to the property now, now the city does not have to maintain it or incur that cost for the maintenance of that facility. And so, we are still moving forward and it's a hope, you know, again, it's, we've been working closely with the hospital. I would imagine, hopefully, I'm not going to, please hold me to it, hopefully resolve this this calendar year, but it might be this fiscal year. And if we can get it done sooner, that is the intent of city staff because we do wish to have those funds in our coffers. Regarding Cortez Park, there's no, what's that?
Bathroom.
Yeah. What's that? No, 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 yes, the bathrooms. Yeah, there's no excuse for that, for dirty bathrooms. We'll be talking to public works staff. I know that, and I think the public has brought up in the past, we have had some issues with individuals who don't respect the city's public property and that's one of the assignments that this bike patrol will have, is to monitor our parks and other spaces, public spaces as well. But again, we'll work with staff to address that. Regarding Ms. Mulder's comments on parking on our street, our street and renting of rooms, the police department follow up on that with a code enforcement to see if that's an issue. I know the council brought up the issue of Airbnbs as part of the budget. I know this, I imagine this is not an Airbnb. Doesn't sound like it to me, but that's an item that we will be bringing back to the council at a future meeting for discussion. Let's see, Ms. Mesmen talked about some employees working 40 hours a week or eight to five. There are some folks that are working five days, so we have services here open at City Hall. I'm not sure who you spoke to, but police and fire are open seven days a week and so is Public Works because they do actually get out there, do in the streets and the park programs. We already talked about Birdy and then the trees on Grand, we will refer that to the county. And, Mr. Mayor, I believe that response to the comments, oh, Ms. Potras talked about the Coyote Plan. I think that's coming back September, September 5th. We've been working with the county on that plan as well as, we'll have staff follow up with her with regards to the six-foot versus eight-foot wall as well.
Thank, hang on. Thank you, Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the Cortez Park bathroom, remember I mentioned so many times regarding the bathroom, the safety, and the bathroom is a major issue, okay? And how often we clean the bathroom of the park and how often we have people to check into it? Okay, if the resident, okay, close by and they cannot go to the bathroom and our bathroom is not safe, okay, how can we make sure we can have people utilize the bathroom or the park?
Bathrooms are cleaned daily at all city parks and they're locked up and opened by city staff.[1300.38]
not originally available to us, so I don't know what changed with communication from the county in the time between when we signed the agreement and in past years, I guess it wasn't available or it wasn't offered. I don't know how that came to be. But nonetheless, I've reached out to Birdy, and she's going to get me back the information to make sure that she is credited and she got that discount, or will get the discount. As far as moving forward with animal license canvassing, that is something that was approved as part of the adoption of the budget. And we will be, I just confirmed this in the last couple of days with the county, we will be having a vaccination clinic and a licensing clinic as a joint event here on Saturday, I believe that's Saturday, August 20th, or is that a Sunday? August 20th, and I will confirm date, we don't have the times exactly yet, but it will be a full day available to the community so that they can come out and get their licenses and the rabies vaccinations and have no penalty. When canvassing starts, which will be September 2nd, that is a Saturday, the canvassing will include door-to-door, and it's going to start in specific zip codes, and they'll fan out and do the entire community. There will not be two- to three-year back penalties, it will be the license fee plus the field enforcement fee of $40. So, the rumors that people are having $1,000 bills and such of redeeming their dogs, I can't speak on those specific issues because I haven't heard of that happening, but that would be impound fees and care fees over multiple days, including back penalty, and I don't know if they're West Covina residents. So, I have reached out to Birdy, and I will continue to work with the county. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, here's a few other items. First, with regards to Mr. Shoemaker, I think he was mistaken with regards to the adoption of the city budget. I think that the $5 million delta he's talking about happens to be related to the CIP projects, which is General Fund Dollars, which is the construction of Glendora Avenue. So, we are projecting that there'll be a $10 million bond that would be potentially issued in this fiscal year, with $5 million being utilized in fiscal year 17, 18, and the other probably being used in 18, 19. So, I believe that's the word, the $5 million delta. With regards to the $6 million mystery deficit that appeared and then disappeared, as we shared at all the different budget meetings, we told people how we got to the 6.1 million, and then the efforts that the city council and the city staff took with new revenues and expenditure cuts in order to close that gap. With regards to budget amendments that Ms. Mesmen keeps bringing up, or brought up this evening, that is the right way of doing business. We hadn't been doing budget amendments, and cities are supposed to be doing budget amendments to keep track and to publicly disclose when we're doing any kind of new revenues or expenditures that were not budgeted for in the coming year. And so, for example, tonight, we have on the city council an item on the BICEP insurance. There's a budget amendment because we have projections of what the insurance for the city is going to be. We get that bill from BICEP, and we have to pay for it. That comes out of one of the other special funds, so we need to do a budget amendment to transfer money from one fund to another, or to, from the fund balance in order to pay these premiums. That is an effort and a method that the auditors wish to see, that the city had not been doing in the past, that the city is putting in process, so you can keep track of any transaction that shows money coming and going from the city. Another one happens to be, we talked about the overtime for the police officers. That is another budget amendment because we received a grant. We weren't expecting that grant. So, therefore, that's an additional monies that the city receives, so we have to do a budget amendment showing the revenues coming in, and then expenditure budget amendment showing that the money's going to be utilized for that program. The reason it was a budget amendment for fiscal year 16, 17 is, the program has just received funding in 16, 17. This, by putting this additional grant with the original grant, it keeps all the money together, so when, in 17, 18 begins, which is now, all that money is transferred over together and can be utilized all at once. The bike patrol program has not begun, they're currently putting together the plan for the officers and seeking recruitment of those officers, and so hopefully, we'll have them out on patrol in the next couple of months. Sunset Field, I can talk about that, let's council wishes to pull that item for a separate discussion? No? Just to address it real quickly, there's a couple different reasons that, and I see Mr. Shoemaker is gone, but the reason we, it's been delayed to sell the property is, the city is trying to sell the property the legal way. In the past, the city has been criticized for not selling property legally, and this, we are being, not necessarily being required, it's the right thing to do when you sell property, you're supposed to do an environmental clearance. The hospital has to go through their park, their master plan for the new hospital, they have to do an environmental plan for that new master plan, which includes the property they wish to acquire. That is the legal, and that is the right thing to do, and so it has been delayed, but they still are buying the property from the city. There's been criticism about the $1,700. The reason that dollar amount was established is, that was the highest value in rental income that that park made when we had it being rented out to the public, to any of the sports groups. So, that is why, how we established the $1,700, because that was the value that the city was receiving on the best of times. Okay? The additional, by having the hospital lease it and make improvements to the property now, now the city does not have to maintain it or incur that cost for the maintenance of that facility. And so, we are still moving forward, and it's a hope, you know, again, it's, we've been working closely with the hospital, I would imagine, hopefully, I'm not going to, please hold me to it, hopefully, we resolve this this calendar year, but it might be this fiscal year, and if we can get it done sooner, that is the intent of city staff, because we do wish to have those funds in our coffers. Regarding Cortez Park, there's no, what's that?
Bathroom.
Yeah. What's that? No, 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 yes, the bathrooms. Yeah, there's no excuse for that, for dirty bathrooms, we'll be talking to Public Works staff. I know that, and I think the public has brought up in the past, we have had some issues with individuals who don't respect the city's public property, and that's one of the assignments that this bike patrol will have, is to monitor our parks and other spaces, public spaces as well. But again, we'll work with staff to address that. Regarding Ms. Mulder's comments on parking on our street, or our street and renting of rooms, the police department will follow up on that with a code enforcement to see if that's an issue. I know the council brought up the issue of Airbnbs as part of the budget, I know this, I imagine this is not an Airbnb, doesn't sound like it to me, but that's an item that we will be bringing back to the council at a future meeting for discussion. Let's see, Ms. Mesmen talked about some employees working 40 hours a week, or eight to five. There are some folks that are working five days, so we have services here open at City Hall, I'm not sure who you spoke to, but police and fire are open seven days a week, and so is Public Works, because they do actually get out there, do in the streets and the park programs. We already talked about Birdy, and then the trees on ground, we will refer that to the county. And, Mr. Mayor, I believe that response to the comments, oh, Ms. Potras talked about the Coyote Plan, I think that's coming back, September? September 5th, we've been working with the county on that plan, as well as, we'll have staff follow up with her with regards to the six-foot versus eight-foot wall as well.
Thank, so, hang on. Thank you, Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the Cortez Park bathroom, remember, I mentioned so many times regarding the bathroom, the safety, and the bathroom is a major issue, okay? And how often we clean the bathroom of the park, and how often we have people to check into it, okay? If the resident, okay, close by, and they cannot go to the bathroom, and our bathroom is not safe, okay, how can we make sure we can have people utilize the bathroom or the park?
Bathrooms are cleaned daily at all city parks, and they're locked up and opened by city staff every morning at city parks, and closed in the evenings.
So, if this is cleaned daily, why she has that problem, that in the Cortez Park have like two days filthy and have the problems?
And again, we are having difficulties in all the city parks because of individuals who aren't respecting our public property. It's not uncommon for city staff to refill the restrooms in the morning with toilet paper and paper towels, come back two hours, and all those are gone. So, it's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, following question, I remember we hired two staff to do graffiti, and that were including the cleaning of the park too, right?
That's correct.
And those two persons were in charge of make sure the bathroom is clean, correct?
No, there's, that's not those two people, they're part of the overall park pro, cleaning program, their primary service is graffiti, but if they're at the city parks, they also are doing maintenance of the parks while they're there, or if it's something that's going to be more time-consuming, they'll report it to their supervisor to have other park personnel come and clean it, or fix it.
So, my final question would be, how can we, okay, okay, emphasize or improve the bathroom of the park, because they have so many complaint about park all the time?
And that's going to be an ongoing battle that the city will have. The more of a presence that we have of public staff, our public safety at our city parks, the better it will be, and the comfort the residents will have of, that there's, that it's a safe atmosphere. That was one of the priorities of having this bike patrol come onboard, is that it'll be able to patrol our city parks and other public spaces.
So, you have a confidence you can make sure our park will be clean and, okay, safe, right?
I will do our best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Spence.
Yes, you mentioned Coyote, we're working with the state fish and wildlife and that kind of stuff, not just the county, correct? Is that right?
On the Coyote Plan?
Yeah.
I believe, I'll defer to Nicole.
It's not just the county, right?
We're looking at other cities who've also adopted them, and we're comparing what we have going on in our community, and then we're also reaching, we've also worked with counties, so we've gone back and forth in the last couple of weeks. They supposedly have developed a regional task force, or type, a type of, yeah, I don't know. So, we're trying, we're trying to get confirmation on that one, because we've reached out for several times via email and phone, and we haven't heard back, so.
Well, that's an excellent sign. Okay, and when you get back to, Mr. Potras, I mean, can you let the council know what the discussion was about the fence thing, and whether that's correct, and all that kind of stuff? Because when you get back to, and actually, that's with all individual residents, it's helpful if you let us know what that outcome was, so that we know it was taken care of, and that it doesn't need to be followed up on.
Certainly, we'll make sure, and I think we have in the past, make sure, we try and keep you guys updated.
Yeah. In the discussion about the trees, and I know I've talked to you about this, but where are we that we can have a way that people can find out if the trees that are at someone's house are actually the city's trees, and that the city's responsible for the trimming of it, and when it's going to be trimmed, and not just, because I think it's difficult, people don't know.
And I think that's a great point, it's good timing, because we just started getting ready to put that whole project together. What it is, we're creating a form online that you submit to city staff, they're able to look it up and respond to the resident to let them know if it's a city tree won, and when was the last time it was trimmed, and when is scheduled to be trimmed again. We looked at, doing some sort of use of the West Coast Arborist software system, but to assimilate with our software system, would have had a pretty costly price tag, so rather than paying for that, we've decided that we'll have city staff respond to residents as they inquire about that.
One other item on the, did you have some?
I did, I can leave.
Oh, okay. On the event coming up to get the dogs licensed and also get their shots, do we happen to know what the costs will be? Have we posted that on anything as far as for getting the rabies vaccinations?
We have not posted anything yet, because we're still finalizing the details, including the vaccination costs. The license for an altered dog is $22, and I think it's 60 for an unaltered.
And it's also $10 for seniors.
Correct, and veterans.
Is that altered, or is that unaltered?
Either or either.
Yeah, so Mr. Love mentioned about the letters, I think he was happy with the outcome, but we checked back with him and find out if a letter was sent, or just to check on the, to make sure the procedure's working, yeah.
Certainly, we will follow up. I did ask city staff, it is in the report that letters were sent out, and I confirmed that with the Public Works Department.
Yeah, but we sound, I mean, we get, we get that, it's 300 feet, we sound 300 feet. You may not have been with that 300 feet.
That's very possible as well.
Any other questions? If not, we will move to the consent calendar. I have item number three, which Mayor Protam Spence has asked to be pulled, item number four, which Councilman Johnson has asked to be pulled, six, Councilman Wu, seven, actually, seven has been pulled by staff, nine has been pulled by staff, 10 has been pulled by Councilman Toma, and 13 was pulled by Councilman Wu. Is there any other item to be pulled? If not, may I have a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve all the following items.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Johnson, and a second by Councilman Toma. Madam Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Toma.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Warshaw.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The first item is, item number four.
Item three.
Oh, excuse me. Item three.
Yes, I pulled this item, and, you know, I'm fine with the outcome, I would like to see how we get back on item number B, but I have concerns about item number A, and it's actually now, I think, a greater problem, and that is, you know, there's been no collisions at that location, according to the staff's report. And now, you know, everybody talks about how fast everyone goes, how people are speeding, how fast people go, and the solution is to put up a crosswalk. Now, we're telling people to cross right in front of where people are speeding and drag racing. So, to me, we're setting up a collision that we're going to be responsible for, and then now, the problem is, if we reject this and somebody gets hit there, the city's liable, could be liable too, because, you know, we have this report that shows there were no collisions there, and, you know, and now, you know, it's damned if we do, damned if we don't. And I'm just concerned, it doesn't make any sense to me, why we would have an area where we say people speed, or we say people drag race, and the solution is to put up, where there's been no collisions, the solution is to put up a place so people can walk across it. With limited visibility, I might add. I just don't get it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of council, when we do an analysis for, in this particular case, a crosswalk analysis, we look at different factors. Collision history is one of them, but that's not the only factor that we look at. We look at the number of vehicles that go through there. For this particular location, Shadow Oak Drive, there are about 8700 vehicles that go through there every day. We look at vehicle speeds. The critical speed is anywhere between 38 to 40 miles per hour, which is pretty fast for that type of roadway. And the other thing that we look at is the line of sight, and in this particular case, it's insufficient. I drove there a couple times in the past, I was there today again, looking at it. If you're going eastbound, it's actually going downhill. So, what you can see is, once you go past, I think it's Gemini, or I think it's the other street that's closest to the park, you're halfway between that cross street and the driveway before you would even see a pedestrian who might be crossing. And the reason why we want to mark it and put flashing beacons is to alert the motorists that you have a crosswalk at that location. We're not just putting a crosswalk, we're putting in, in advance, flashing beacons too.
Yeah, okay, I just think, I don't know, it just seems like you're setting up somebody to get hit there at some point.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one point, the difficulty from a legal perspective is, if we meet the warrants and we don't
Oh, I understand.
... install the safety feature, then we could be held liable for that. I think the important part would be to ensure that what we design is properly engineered and designed, and is signed off on, in which case, if there is unfortunately an accident, we would at least have design immunity.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Thank you. If not, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
It's been moved by, it's been moved by Councilman Toma, and seconded by Councilman Wu. Any discussion?
Yeah, and I just want to confirm this, that on both of these recommendations, nobody that was notified of the three, at the 300 intersection showed up, is that correct? So, nobody that was notified that these changes were going to be made bothered to show up, is that correct?
We sent out notices 300 feet within the subject intersections. We sent that out to all the property owners.
Right, and nobody showed up?
Only Mr. and Mrs. Sykes.
Were they within the 300?
They were the ones who attended.
Well, I know they were the ones who attended, are they within the 300?
Probably not, but we sent them specifically.
I know they're not within the 300 of the Roseway one, I know that.
Yeah, but we sent them notices because they were the ones who requested it.
Right, I understand that. I, you know, you know, at some point, we have to, you know, maybe have a discussion about, you know, it's nice for people to go around the neighborhood and decide what should be in people's neighborhoods, but maybe, you know, maybe districting will be part of that, you know, maybe we should, if the people that actually live in that area don't see a problem, then, you know, maybe we should take their word for it, rather than people that want to be people's nannies, or busybodies from other areas.
And if I may add to, we received an email from a resident on Cromley.
Opposing it?
Opposing it.
Yeah, okay, so, opposing the light?
Opposing the traffic signal.
Not necessarily a key clear, or whatever.
No, I think he even suggested that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, just seems a weird way to do business.
Madam Assistant City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
No.
Toma.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Warshaw.
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. We'll now move to item number four, city investment report for the month ended May 31, 2017. May I have the city treasurer give a report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, Colleen Rosati, city treasurer. This is the investment report, which is presenting the city's cash and investment for the month of May, ending in May 31, 2017. This report is in compliance with the California Government Code, Section 53646, regarding the reporting of detailed information on all securities, investments, and monies of the cities, as well as reporting the market value of investments held. All the investments contained in this portfolio are in full compliance with the Government Code 53601, and the city's investment policy as the types of investments that are allowed. The city's investment policy was last revised and adopted by the city council on May 16, 2017. As stated in this attached report, there are significant funds to meet the budgeted expenditures over the next six months. The city's investment policy has set primary goals in the portfolio to manage it in a safe, liquidity, and high-yield manner. The city currently utilizes Chandler Asset Management, who uses an active investment management approach in which securities are purchased, but not necessarily held to maturity. The city's cash flow requirements are evaluated on an ongoing basis, I'm told, with short-term needs accommodated through the city's pool investment with Los Angeles County Investment Pool. At the end of May, on the 31st, 2017, the city's investment portfolio had a market value of $59,585,791 and some change. This includes, but not limited to, 21 million in LASAP, 500,000 in Bank of the West, 3 million in Wells Fargo, and 35 million in various investments with Chandler Asset Management. The bonds reserved are held and invested by trustee. The investments of these funds are governed by the investment policy approved by the city council as part of the governing documents for each specific bond issued. At May 31, 2017, the city's bond reserve had a market value of $1,645,534. I did want to follow up on a question that you had, Mr. Mayor, a couple meetings ago in reference to the interest rate at Bank of the West on a money market account that we currently have 500,000, I'm sorry, 500,000 in. The monies, as you know, is very liquid, and that is indicative of the rate being very low. I have spoken to Bank of the West, and they are more than willing to look at some other options. They are open, open to increasing the interest rate based on the amount of monies that we have with them. The current letter of credit that we have, I verified that, is $2.1 million, and we have on deposit with them 501,396,000. The other update I just wanted to give you is, on an ongoing basis, quarterly, myself and the staff will be meeting with Chandler Asset Management. We currently have that scheduled for July 31, approximately at 2 o'clock here at City Hall, to go over the quarterly investments, and to see where we stand. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Is there any questions from council?
Should we at least get a few?
The only thing I would like is, Mr. City Manager, if we can make sure that we do have a talk with Bank of the West, and see if we can get our higher rate return, and either putting that into a different type of an account, that still is, is as still as liquid as necessary for us to conduct our business. With that, do I have a motion to receive and file?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file with those, a couple of questions you asked.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion to receive and file, may I have a roll call, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Toma.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Warshaw.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
The next item is item number six, a lease agreement with West Covina Car Stop LLC to utilize the City Yard Auto Shop. Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I pulled, okay, this item, okay, I have no problem with this lease agreement, but I have a problem with the term of the lease, okay? It's a seven years, and the common commercial lease, okay, since I'm in the business, normally is 10 years, and then you have a two, five years option, and at the term, they only have a seven years, they don't have any option. So, meaning, options protect the DC, meaning the tenant, they, in the seven years up, they can say, hey, I want to continue this another five years. So, to protect the tenant, but if they don't want to have that option, sound like the seven years up, they're possible going to walk away. So, my point is, if the city leases to them for seven years, so after seven years, they walk away, what we're going to, what is our plan to do about this place? Because seven years is such a short time. So, or hopefully, can we help them to say, maybe extend to 10 years, or do they want option? So, what is your suggestion, Mr., okay, City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. So, item number six is regarding the lease agreement and the public-private partnership between West Covina Car Stop LLC, which is also here locally known as West Covina Ford. The city is looking to partner with West Covina Ford to take over the city's auto shop operations. The city's looking to do this partnership for a variety of reasons. One is, is the efficiencies of our operations aren't as nearly as efficient as the folks over at West Covina Ford can provide for our vehicles. Most of, many of our vehicles are already being treated, or served at West Covina Ford, all our police cars and whatnot, and in addition, they are doing many big, large vehicles for our county contract that we receive. So, that includes everything from fire engines, to quints, to fire trucks, large Public Works vehicles, buses, and other vehicles. So, they will be able to operate out of our facility for our vehicles, but then also working on vehicles for other clients of theirs, both public agencies as well as private clients. The idea by doing so is that the efficiencies are, that our vehicles will be a priority for them to work on. It will generate some revenues, both as a lease operations, so we generate revenues about a quarter million dollars a year in revenues for the lease, as well as sales tax. So, when they start working and providing services on outside vehicles, they're buying parts. Those parts will have taxable sales, they'll be based here in West Covina. So, we will receive those additional funds as well. We have met with them, Mr. Hidalgo, the owner of West Covina Ford is here in the audience. I think that the reason they have this seven-year agreement is because it coincides with their agreement at their, their local auto dealerships that they have here in town. I think if you wish to, we can call him up to the podium if you like, he'd He'd answer any additional questions. As far as the options, he may be open to that as well, but I'll leave that to him, and we can have that discussion. So, Mr. Hidalgo, if you want to come forward, and Justin Tinker is here with him as well, and we've been working closely with Justin on putting this project together.
Good afternoon. I'm Carlos Hidalgo. But I am, I'm willing to do the two five-year extensions that, that would, option, yeah.
So, seven years after, you can protect.
Seven plus two fives. That would be good.
How about 10 years at two fives?
Well, see, the existing leases that I have have seven with the options, so I want them to coincide in that.
Understand.
So, you know, at some point, I would like to get them all together.
The point, we're just thinking about longevity of partnership with you, so that could help the city, city can help you, so both together as a partnership.
No, I appreciate it.
So, that's why I'm saying the, maybe the lease, seven, 10 years, or two option, showing your commitment to the city, to that last side, and to continue to serve our vehicle and all the vehicle for your business.
So, yeah, I'm willing to do that. That would be, no problem.
And if there's council consensus part of the approval tonight, we'll make sure we incorporate those changes. Now, again, tonight is given a blessing to move forward. It's our hope to have at your August 15 meeting the actual contract for adoption at that time.
Thank you. One question for Mr. Hidalgo. I just wanted to confirm, Ford of West Covina is just a DBA for West Covina Car Stop LLC?
Correct, correct.
So, there's not two separate corporations?
No, no, it's just, it's a DBA.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one thing is, I hope you can support the after-school program.
Of course, we do, we do. We had a great Christmas event also.
Mr. Hidalgo, I will point out, there's a Ms. Elsie Mesman in the audience. For the past at least year or two, she keeps making sure we send our vehicles to West Covina Ford, rather than other Ford dealerships in other communities. So, I think this is a good opportunity for us to make sure we're sending you business and moving forward.
I appreciate everything you guys have done for us. Thank you. Thank you.
So, let's see, who made the motion? Do you want to make the motion with the amendment? Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I want to move the motion. Seven years lease agreement plus a two, five years option, and to approve it.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, this came up in closed session negotiation. At the time, I just, I wasn't comfortable. Seems like Ford of West Covina does a great job, they're great business. We should support them to the extent that we can purchase cars from them, you know, do our service to them. I fully support and endorse. I have no problem with, you know, a public-private partnership in concept, but I just didn't think the analysis in terms of lease terms, a lot of the numbers seemed to be aspirational. I didn't see any comp in terms of other, you know, cities that have done this, and so I just wasn't comfortable with the, with the information support to merit this. If we get that before the contract happens, I may change my mind, but I just didn't think it was supported. If conflicts arise between us and the businesses we're doing, it could lead to problems, and so I'm just not comfortable voting for this at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Assistant City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Toma.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Warshaw.
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. The next item is item number 10, designation of voting delegate for League of California Cities 2017 Annual Conference and Expo. Councilman Toma.
Yes, so on this one, I just wanted to get clarification or confirmation that I know that the League of Cities requests that delegates go back to their council to get a vote from the council on issues that come up, and I just want to see if a request has been made already, and then if Mayor Pro Tem Spence will pass that request on to the council for the agenda if and when he gets it as a representative.
I'll have Ms. Minnick respond to that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There is a deadline coming up for submission of those resolutions to the League of California Cities, and then on July 28, the League of California Cities will be sharing those resolution requests with staff, with member cities, so that those member cities can then take those resolutions back to their councils to have a vote done upon those.
Isn't that what we've been doing for the last three, four years? Four years, right? Is that what we've been doing?
Yeah.
So, why do I have to sign off on what we've been doing for three, four years?
Well, because the reason why the last time it came up, you didn't want to do it, and it became an issue that you didn't want to do it, and you didn't think that you needed the vote of the council to do it, even a couple of years before, and when I brought it up, you were like, why are you bringing it up to the council as a delegate?
I have no problem agendizing it for the council to talk about. I mean, I've never had a problem with it being agendized to talk about.
I see, but you're not, you're not necessarily agreeing to vote based on what the council votes on, or?
Well, I think while the discussion, when we see the resolutions, and you can decide at that time. You know, and actually, you know, this last time, when you guys directed me to vote for this, what was it called? Safe Streets thing? You know, they changed the language, and then the only vote that took place was whether or not we were going to talk about the changed language, which was defeated by the delegates. And of course, I voted to allow debate amongst the delegates that were assembled there. So, like I told you earlier, I will always vote to allow debate amongst the delegates that are around there, and, you know, if you guys instruct me to vote a certain way, you've instructed me to vote a certain way.
So, you're, just to clarify, you are not agreeing to go with the majority vote of the council on a resolution that comes before the city council for the League of Cities?
I'm not not agreeing not to do that. Absolutely negative. No, I mean, I mean, you're asking me to, in the future, buy myself something I haven't seen. If there's something that you guys approve, and I say I'm not going to vote for it, I will let you know, and then I will not serve as your delegate to the committee. I'm willing to commit to that.
Well, that's, that's an improvement from, from last year.
Is it?
It is. Yeah, because the last time, you said you were just going to go and vote wherever you wanted to vote, so.
Oh, that's because you voted wrong. I can't help, can't help when you vote wrong, James.
Well, I mean, I mean, if that's the case, if you're saying.
But I mean, if I'm going there as representative for the city, I'm supposed to vote the way for the city is. If you guys have selected to vote for something that's so rehemp, rehemp, reh, thank you, see, that I cannot do that, I would tell you that upfront. And then I would tell you guys, that's how you want to do, but I'd be very clear that, look, I can't vote for that. That's just something that's just too, too crazy.
But to confirm, you're saying you will then not cer, you will not vote at all at that point?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, got it.
Or I would not. I would say select somebody else, or, yeah, I wouldn't do it. Yeah. He's not going. He's not going. You guys aren't going. So, but I think, I think, you know, I don't expect you, Mr. Toma, to vote the way the council directs you to vote. If it's something that, you know, violates your own personal conscience, I think you should let us know that, and then let you off the hook for that.
No, I, so I agree. I think that's fine. If you're, if you're telling us, I can't vote that way, so I'm just not going to go and vote that way. That's fine with me. I just don't want, I don't think a representative should go and vote the opposite of what the majority of the council has done, especially if the League of Cities is asking the council to vote a certain way so that their delegate knows how they want them to vote at the meeting.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I get it.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't have a problem with Mayor Pro Tem going to this, since he's the only one that wants to go. I just think it's kind of funny, because he doesn't even want us to be there in the first place. So, I think that's my, on number 27 that's coming up tonight, he's asking questions.
No, that's actually, is that not what I'm asking?
What's on, you know, why are we even doing it? You know, so I, I don't have a problem with him going, but I just had to make that statement. He wants to go, but yet he doesn't want to go, because he doesn't think we should be there. But anyway, I have no problem with him being there.
You can pull out at any time if you feel good.
So, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Johnson.
I'll make a motion that we send Mayor Pro Tem to the League of Cities.
No, to, he automatically can go.
Well, to vote for us, whatever you want to call it.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Councilman Wu to have Mayor Pro Tem Spence vote for the, or to be the voting delegate for the League of California Cities 2017. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Toma.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Warshaw.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to item number 13, Cypress Valley Health Partners lease agreement for use of the former Sunset Field. Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I know previously, city managers already answered some of the questions, okay, that I might ask, but, but still, okay, as a real estate professional transaction, without closing, you cannot do any alteration, because we not guarantee they can go through, right? Because do they have a 12-months time, okay, to purchase the agreement you have with them? But, okay, if, God forbid, they have something, stop this purchase, because not, nobody can guarantee this 100% will go through, even we have a vote to everything we agree upon, but we don't know what happened later on, they change their mind, they say, hey, sorry, we cannot. Do we have any teeth? For example, forfeit their deposit? Okay, this is one, first, my question is. And second question I have is this, I totally disagree we let them to do something like this. We love, okay, they pay something, okay, and for example, non-refundable deposit, or something go wrong, they are going to put it back exactly what they demolish, okay? As, for example, they put the concrete and that for their parking, and it should be a grassy area. Another thing, the third issue I have is, if, if we have a 12-months, okay, and, okay, basically, doing this transaction, how about we let people to use this 12-months, still using as a park, till they close escrow? So, this is a couple of question I have, that what you have on the agenda, and the 1,400 or 1,700 to lease this place, I think is too cheap. As a real estate guy, I think, okay, I would lease for 1,700 to do something I want, but I don't, maybe you have, because they purchased, so you want to give them a good deal, but at the same time, what my point is this, okay, without closing the escrow, the buyer shouldn't touch anything, okay, from the seller, till, okay, we have a guarantee, then we can let them do it.
I will let our city attorney address the issues with the sale of the property.
We do have essentially an agreement with them, and that agreement is that they will move forward with the sale, provided that the sequel analysis is done and completed. You could certainly add additional provisions to this lease agreement, if you'd like to do that, and that could be anything from different rent to reinstatement of the facilities if they, if they come down. I think there's some concern, and I'm sure that Ms. Presianni might want to address it, there's some concern about the existing facilities there continuing to be an attractive nuisance. And so, this was, this was viewed as an opportunity to move forward, provide CVHP with an opportunity to see how wonderful it is to have their parking there, and move this project forward as quickly as possible. But certainly, the council makes the decisions here.
So, how much guarantee? Now, you're talking about this, but how much guarantee you can have to about this contract will go through? Because the transaction, okay, a lot of time, real estate transaction, they fail, okay, due to they, they have some issue EPA or something, they change, they do, allow them to do something like this. God forbid, and that happen, what happen next, okay? And then so, so should we go back, okay, to the park again? So, right now, since they want to lease this place, they want to demolish all those facility, and they use, okay, there's like nuisance, but they just won't have a parking space without, okay, paying too much. Okay, so in that, that's what they want as advantage. But my point is, from the city point of view, I think that without the closing, I really don't want to touch the property. This is what I comment for the real estate, okay? You cannot touch the property till you close, but as a city, something we can negotiate, so if something go wrong, cannot, they have to kind of renovate, back a new facility for us.
And absolutely, if that's the council direction, that's what we will move forward with.
Councilman Johnson.
My question was, when we came up with the 1,700, I know you said that's what we were, did we ask them for, you know, did we negotiate for, you know, for them leasing this from us for the short time, six months and thereon, or did we just say, all we were getting was 1,700 before, that's all, that's all we want?
I'll refer that to Ms. Presianni, since she was part of the negotiations.
The question, the question that was discussed internally was, what were we generating? And based on past reports, it's actually, this is actually double what we were generating before. A year ago, last year, when we had first initially come to you before the ballot measure, we actually were only getting about nine, but we were getting about 95, 9600 a year in revenue. So, this was actually at the height, so we would actually be making more based on this. And sure, 1,700 looks like that's not very much, especially for the space, but we're encountering a lot of issues back there. We're having, most recently, Public Works had to go through and actually weld the doors shut, because we were having problems with people cutting bolts and going in there and creating encampments, which were creating drug use. And we have youth soccer practicing out there. So, while we have the Orangewood Soccer Complex being built, and it's complete, we're still waiting for that grass to seed, and our opening date is September 8. We have had to have an alternative place, in addition to Edgewood High School being under construction, so they lost another field. So, every time we make, you know, two steps forward, we take some steps back. So, we're trying to take those steps to make it a safe place, but, you know, talking about people complaining about park restrooms and such, those are the same issues that we're having at Sunset Field, only multiply that, because it's not visible. They're cutting fence between the apartment complex. There's just a lot of bad activity that's going on there that we just can't control to the extent of the hospital has used more readily accessible space. And moving forward, that's what the intent is, that's what the intent was when it went to the vote of the people, and it just makes sense to move forward in that direction.
Mayor Pro Tem Spence.
Yeah, I know, you know, this Sunset Field issue, there's people that are upset that the council placed this on the ballot with the restrictions we did had to be spent on new parks, because they're not happy with, they want, you know, first, it was that we weren't, we were going to spend it, you know, not on new parkland, and now they want to spend it on other stuff. And then, of course, you know, everyone's a real estate expert now, you know, and I know from, if you're at any kind of event, and you start talking about what you bought your house for, and 90% of the people bought it just the right time in the market, and nailed it, and, you know, are making a lot of money, because they're all geniuses, you know, but their neighbors are really kind of dumb about when they bought it. But, you know, the reality is, it's a myth that this is a park that was used by children for anything but the rented-out travel ball. This was a landlocked piece of land, a field left over from a development from years ago, and it is nothing but a homeless encampment now. And so, for us to say, like, somehow, that we need to preserve this thing at all costs and jerk around Queen of the Valley, because that will help get us the land faster, is mistaken. And on top of that, you know, in all these discussions about Queen of the Valley, we ignore the fact, they lent us money already to buy parkland and expand Cameron Park. And if this Cortez deal had gone through, they would have loaned us the money to do that. They are willing to front that money to us so we can buy parkland.
Interest-free.
Interest-free. So, you know, to think that somehow, Queen of the Valley is getting the best of this, and the city is not being benefited, they're wrong. We should let them pay over this homeless encampment, you know, we should get the rent money, and we should try to get the sale done as soon as possible. I'd also like to add, those people that are upset about the west side and the parkland is, I know Mr. Johnson, and I know myself, we've suggested land that could be bought by the city, you know, but what some people don't understand about negotiations is, somebody has to agree to sell it to you, you know? And so, people are always going, oh, why don't you just buy that land? Like, it's magic, you know, we can order it and take it, like, you know, you know, we could do, like redevelopment, like the state did with redevelopment, you know, you know, like, we can do that. You know, we don't have the power to force someone to sell his property if they don't want to sell it to us. And so, you know, it's a mistake to think that somehow jerking around Queen of the And so, you know, it's a mistake to think that somehow jerking around Queen of the Valley is going to make this project better, and that somehow it's going to help kids. It's just a plain myth, and it's just very frustrating to hear people try to kill something that the voters of West Covina have already approved. So I'd like to move we approve this deal. Pay over the homeless encampment.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protam Spence, and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion? Councilman Wu.
Okay, and let's go back, the discussion we have is, do we still have any chance they cannot go through? Okay, since, okay, if they give us the money, okay, if, if they're going to go through, we have to give back the money to them, right? So I understand that it's a perfect war that this all goes through. I, I want to sell the park too, okay? I agree, okay, to the mayor's protein expense. I think this is a perfect, for the, I agreed that time, okay, sell it to the, sell park to them for the emergency, but the thing I worry about is this, okay, now they want to demolish, and they want to do the parking, and, okay, and, okay, they, they will pay $1,700 or something. And then my point is this, okay, do we have any chance, okay, that they can go through? Okay, they won't go through? Or, okay, how many months left, okay, we can have this transaction closed? I want it closed, okay, hopefully ASAP, so, so in this thing's over, they can start doing the construction for the emergency room facility to help people? But, but what, can you give me the answer, how many months left?
No, secret.
I'll do my best on the how many months left, because I will tell you that a hospital remodel, and this is an expansion as well, it'll be years before they actually are able to expand the emergency rooms and the surgery. So first, what they need to do is complete what's called their master plan, or what they plan to do with that property. Once that's done, they can share that with the city, and we can do the environmental analysis that needs to be accomplished for that project. And we've had meetings with Citrus Valley Health Partners, and that could be anything from a full-blown EIR, which could take a year, or it could be something less. But we can't sell that property until that environmental review's done, according to the law.
I, I understand, okay, this, okay, will take them for time to have all those environmental research, and plus, okay, and the emergency room, and the facility, I understand. But, but we'll let stop us to, that then to purchase the land, okay? And they purchase the land, for example, they buy the, they buy the land first, and they can do their, their thing. So, so what, what I'm saying is, is that possible, they can close this transaction, and then they can, they own the land now, and they can take their time to do the environmental, to do the facility, to do all design?
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we were just selling it on spec, that would be one thing, but we're not. We, we're selling it for a specific purpose. They have an intent to use it for a specific purpose. And if we, if we didn't do a CQ analysis before we closed that sale, it would be subject to legal challenge. It's really clear that CQ has to be done before we close the sale, because a sale is a discretionary act. So to, to answer your question about, is there a possibility that this isn't going to happen? I, I would be an absolute fool if I could guarantee you that the sale is going to close unquestionably. We obviously have high hopes. I know that the hospital has spent a lot of money, they're very interested in doing this. I don't think there's anybody truly that doesn't want the expansion of the hospital to go forward.
I think everybody wants this hospital expansion, okay?
I, I utilized the emergency room six times for my father before he passed away, on Queens Oak Valley. I, this 17 years ago, I know how important for the emergency room, and it's way too small, okay, even 17 years ago. So I understand how important for our city. But again, how to protect the city benefit is another issue. Now, they want to demolish, they want to make us a parking lot. So how much, how big the space, okay, how many parking space they want to extend, okay? And if something, God forbid, if something go wrong, were they willing to convert back to the grassy area or something? Otherwise, how we utilize all those land? What I'm saying is, you have to prepare, if the work, scenario happen, so we, we can have some protection, okay, and backup plan.
Obviously, what you have before you is subject to council's decision to change it. We, we made a recommendation, but as, as Mr. Spence has, and I have talked about many times, we make recommendations, you make decisions. So if, if what you want is additional protections in the agreement, and that's what the council majority directs, that's what we will do.
And, and another thing, for the $1,700 monthly rental for the space, okay, and I think, okay, I know you negotiate with that, can we get more than $1,700 for such a big space, for them to convert to a parking space? And the most important thing, how many months, okay? If, as you say, it's going to take a lot of time, so maybe it's not more than one year. So maybe two years for them to finalize, okay, they will be allowed to the hospital, and then we are going to leasing them for them to two years. I don't mind, okay, if they are going to close the escrow, okay, and we then do this, but you need to have some protection for the escrow, for the seller, meaning us, okay? What we can do, okay, for example, okay, I know the, the hospital is a good thing, but at the same time, the city deserve, okay, the fair, okay, payment for the, for the, for the land that we, we lease to them. I think $700 is too small. I know they lent us the money, but at the same time, business, business, this should be more than $1,700.
If I can address that, it's not, it is $1,700, but you also got to remember, we're also saving money and not paying for the daily maintenance and addressing the issues of the, the park itself. So it means everything from city staff going there on a daily basis, if the restrooms are open to public, you're out there doing everything from mowing the grass, to removing graffiti, removing the, the encampments and that. So there is a significant cost that the city is incurring every month by having that remain as it is.
So they propose, they want to demolish the entire park, so all the grassy area will be demolished into the concrete?
That's correct.
So, in addition to the $1,700, they have given us $500,000 upfront, interest-free. That's worth another, what, $1,700, $1,800 a month?
So the $500,000.
So you're really looking at, yeah, because we've had use of that money now for
Over a year.
Over a year, I think.
And is that $500,000, $500,000 we have to pay back, if something go wrong? Or this is our money forever?
No, that would be returned if for any reason it did not close escrow.
The interest is spin-free.
Interest.
Right, that's, that's $1,700, $1,800, because that's what you would have to pay if we had to borrow that money.
And they're willing to give us more.
Right. All right, so I have a motion on the floor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Johnson?
Aye.
Spence? Aye. Toma?
Aye.
Wu?
No.
Warshaw?
Aye, motion passes 4-1.
We'll now move tonight's public hearing. And our first item is public hearing, item number 20, item number 21. Public hearing regarding West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District Fiscal Year 2017-18 Annual Report and Assessment. And who will give the staff report on that?
Before we do that, Madam City Clerk, do we have verification?
Oh, verification, right.
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll have Paulina Morales give a brief report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This item on the agenda tonight is to confirm the annual report for the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District, and set the direct assessments that will be placed on the Los Angeles County tax rolls for the upcoming fiscal year 2017-2018. On June 13th, 2017, the Association Advisory Board met and voted to approve the annual report for the fiscal, for the upcoming fiscal year. The annual budget for the fiscal year is $1,073,466. This budget includes the repayment of the city loan that was approved last year for the new LED sign, which has been operational since March of this year. It also includes a six-month operating reserve that is required pursuant to the loan agreement with the city. As the BID has the surplus funds from last fiscal year, they're proposing to utilize a portion of the surplus money to cover the six-month operating reserve. As such, the advisory board elected to do a direct assessment of $16,523.77 per dealership for this year, which is a reduction from last year's direct assessment, which is approximately $20,000. The assessment will cover the annual expenses that total $115,666. That goes towards paying the maintenance, electricity, programming, the loan repayment, and insurance for the new LED sign, as well as landscaping, landscaping for the monument entry sign that's on the corner of Azusa and Garvey. The loan repayment is included in this budget, and it's two annual payments of $29,513.20. As the annual report requires approval by the advisory board, any changes to the proposed terms of, oh, sorry. The, this, the report here is for your approval. The council can make any changes to reduce the assessments, but not to increase the assessments. If you have any questions, staff's here to answer.
Is there any question of staff? Seeing no questions, I'll open this up for public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but is there anyone who would wish to speak on this matter? If not, I will close the public comment section, and we'll move on to council discussion. Hearing no discussion, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve, that, what is it, the annual auto dealers, how's it read? The resolution is presented? There we go.
I'll, I'll second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protam Spence, and seconded by Councilmember Toma. May I have reading of the heading?
Resolution, resolution number 2017-48, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, confirming the annual report for the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District area for fiscal year 2017-2018, and levy of assessment.
Johnson?
Aye.
Spence?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. We'll now move on to item number 22, fiscal year 2017-18 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. May we have verification, please?
So verified.
Thank you. And who will give the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly McDonald from Community Services will give you a brief report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This hearing concerns the fiscal year 2017-2018 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Action Plan. The city receives an annual grant of CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and as a condition, city is required to prepare an annual action plan which details how the funds will be spent. This is the second of two required public hearings for the action plan process. The first hearing, which occurred on March 7th, the City Council authorized staff to draft an action plan that would be consistent with the approved 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan Priorities and subsequent amendments. The proposed 2017-18 action plan is included as attachment number one. The consolidated plan priorities, as amended, are shown in Table 1 of the report, and a fuller description is included in attachment number two. Typically, the action plan is due in mid-May, however, with an expected delay in the announcement of allocations, as your HUD delayed the due date, or they pushed back the due date to August 16th, and shortened the public review period to 14 days. In 1718, the city will receive nearly $733,000 in CDBG funds from HUD, and with additional program income, unspent funds from the prior year, and unobligated funds, staff estimates the city will have, or staff estimates available resources in the amount of nearly $951,000. The proposed action plan budget is shown in Table 2 of the report. The neighborhood improvement program includes two capital projects. First is replacement of flooring at the senior center, and the second is the design of a new fire station. The business assistance program helps businesses with loans which result in the creation or retention of jobs for low and moderate-income persons. And in regard to administration and public services, the city has historically funded these categories to the maximum allowed by regulation. The proposed allocations reflect a continuance of this past practice. Relative to public services, the city published a notice of funding availability in February, and received 13 applications with funding requests exceeding the available resources. The applicants and requests are shown in Table 3. Narrative descriptions of the applicants and proposed activities are included in attachment number 3. And attachment number 4 summarizes proposed performance based on full funding. These are taken from the applications, and performance goals in the proposed action plan are prorated based on the recommended amount of funding. The city currently administers three public service activities, the Senior Lunch Program, Careship, which is a childcare subsidy program, and the Domestic Violence Victim Advocate Program, which is administered by the Police Department. These are asterisked in, asterisked in Table number 3. Since fiscal year 2012-13, the city has earmarked funding for these three activities, as well as the Housing Rights Center, which provides fair housing services and fulfills a programmatic Since 1213, the funding level for three of these four activities has been flat. The Careship Program has seen a reduction over this time period. The proposed allocations for items number 1 through 4 in Table 4 reflect a continuance of the past practice of earmarking the funds, leaving a balance of $33,376 available to be allocated to the remaining nine applicants. This turns out to be a little over $10,000 more than was available in 1617. The city, City CDBG Ad-Hoc Committee, the Community and Senior Services Commission, met on June 21st to hear presentations and ask questions of representatives of the nine applicants. Based on the evaluation of applications and presentations, the ad hoc committee developed funding recommendations to be considered by the full commission. At its regularly scheduled meeting on July 11th, the full commission approved the funding recommendations of the ad hoc committee, and approved to transmit those recommendations to the City Council for consideration. The recommendations are shown for numbers, items number 5 through 13 in Table 3, and they're included in the action plan. Notice for the hearing was published on July 3rd, and the draft was available for a 14 public, 14-day public review period as required by HUD. No written comments have been received, and an approved action plan is due by the 16th of August. With that, staff recommends the City Council approve the proposed 1718 action plan as, as included in Attachment 1, and approve Resolution 2017-76, adopting budget amendments to reflect the action plan budget included in Table 4. That concludes my report, and happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Councilman Wu.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my question's over here, on your table number one, owner-occupied housing is a high level, so it's a priority, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on your table number four, so where is the so-called the home improvement, okay, grant, right, that's belong to the CDBG fund?
Yes.
For the so-called owner-occupied, West Covina, we have a lot of old home, and we have a lot of senior citizen, and a lot of maybe lower income or fixed income, they can utilize this owner-occupied housing grant, am I, am I, am I right?
That's correct, and there is still money that is obligated from the previous two years, that is going to be used to, to, to fund loans in the current year.
So, so beyond the table number four, I cannot see anything regarding the, okay, home improvement fund program, okay, and how much you, you are going to, on the coming years, how much you're going to reserve for owner-occupied housing for the senior citizen to improve their home? For example, to improve their so-called the energy-saving insulation? All our 1950 home has no insulation at all. How can we help them to use, using this fund to improve their home, to save energy, and plus have a higher living standard? Because the so-called the, the single-window panel, they didn't help them to do the double panel, so it can save energy, and then for the air condition, so have their a little more, okay, comfortable living, okay? I, I think this CDBG fund ideally designs for improvement for all those so-called the old home, and owner-occupied home, am I right?
Let me try to respond, Kelly, real quick. Yes, it is. And what Mr. McDonald said is that we've had appropriations over the last couple of years, that we haven't fully utilized those funds from those previous years. So there is some CDBG funds available for that purpose, but in addition, the City Council has approved the using of housing funds to help utilize and to promote the program as well. So we have two different pots of monies that we've been able to utilize, and it's been a very successful program.
Very, very good. So how much money we have right now? Can I have the dollar amount?
I don't know if we have it immediately available, but we can get that for you.
Like, $200,000?
It's about $300,000. It's about three.
So $300,000. So how many last years, our senior citizen, or our lower income, our homeowner, they apply this CDBG fund?
That would actually be a question for Paulina. I don't know if she is still here. Maybe we can get that information to council, because we don't have the numbers of the total number, because there are two pots of money.
The reason, the CDBG fund for, okay, okay, so-called the, okay, The reason, the CDBG fund for, okay, okay, so-called the, okay, hard, okay, they're basically designed, again, to help out the community, okay, and this hard fund basically helping, I think it's a lot of times for those, okay, lower income housing and to improve, okay, because they maybe don't have the, okay, the power. So in the CDBG fund plus, remember we're talking about utility grant, so we can, if we can combine these two together, I think we can, okay, help so many of senior citizen or lower income in West Covina, because West Covina has a lot, a lot of old home. 1989, my purchase, my first house, let's build it in 1950, has no insulation and no air condition, but they have a swimming pool, so that's why I purchased. Okay, so it's too high, jumping into the pool. But my point is this, that those home need to be improved, and if we can help those them, those residents use, use the CDBG fund, and, and I think that will utilize a lot, and plus, that will hire the property value, okay, and that will save the energy, okay, and plus, they improve the community, they beautify the community. I think we city need to promote, use the CDBG fund and utility fund, the grant, combine together and promote, okay, and, and, and because I didn't see anything on this proposed, okay, in the future, the CDBG fund, so I'm thinking about how can we utilize this $950,000, use, pass the previous and the now, and have more resident to utilize.
And what I can tell you now, is heavily utilize the program, because I'm always the one signing off on all the agreements, because it's actually a loan that gets secured against the property. So it's a side of the second. I know Mr. Johnson was a participant in the program many years ago, and so I'm the one that signs off, and as I can tell you, we get numerous applications that are coming in, so people are taking advantage of the program, we are promoting it, and we'll continue to do so.
Very good, thank you so much.
Councilman Toma.
So that's good, that actually you think the applications are picking up more recently?
I do, and it's interesting, one of the big demands is new roofs. That's where the, most of the money goes for, is roof projects. People need, can't afford to replace their roof because they are lower income, or if there's a significant code enforcement issues, so it is a tool for code enforcement as well to help improve properties.
So, my general question is, have we heard anything about the future of CDBG? I know a while ago there was some concern about losing more than just the one, I think the difference is just 1% in this year's budget. Have you heard anything else for future years yet?
Not anything new yet, no. Know that the proposal was to eliminate the program, and haven't heard anything new, no.
Do you happen to know, last year, in giving out these loans, did we have anyone that, we didn't finish the process on it last year? Or did we go through everyone, and everyone who qualified, and continued to go through, got the money during the year?
So when we first started the program, we did have a significant waiting list. We've addressed that waiting list, and are taking new applications as they come in. And I think we did have a weekly report, maybe a couple months ago, just telling you what the, the results were for the calendar year, and so we'll, if your council wishes, we can give you an updated report for this year.
Right, and, and I know one of the problems has been for the roofs, people were asking for it during the rainy season, and the problem is...
Wrong time to do it.
Right, because you don't get the money overnight, there is a process, and it does take a little time, so if you think you might need a new roof next year, start applying for it now.
And there is a reminder, there is limits as far as your income...
Right.
To qualify, all that information is on the city's website.
Thank you. Is there any further questions from staff? Mayor Pro Tem Spence.
Yes, I'll be voting for this, against this item, like I did last year, specifically because of the way the program that's being used for it is rigged. It's rigged, it doesn't help small business in West Covina, it only helps businesses of certain size, it helps those that are politically connected, and in fact, even though we haven't had any hearings whatsoever on this, I can fill up a piece of paper and tell exactly who's going to get it this year, who's going to get the subsidy. And so, you know, I'll be voting against it because of that, for that reason.
All right, I'll now open this up to the public. I don't have any cards, but is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Is there any further council discussion?
Do you have the number, how many people apply last year?
Yeah, Paulina came over, we did, she's on average about 20 to 30 loans last year for CDBG funds.
Hopefully, we can, we have, what, 120,000 population, we only have 20 people apply? Can we increase the people apply, so more people can? Hopefully, we have 100 people apply.
Do remember, it is based on income, too, so if you make so much money, so, Mr. Wu, I don't believe you qualify. So that is something to consider, too.
After I become a city council, I think I'm qualified now.
Are there any other comments? If not, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 27-76, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, adopting a budget amendment for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved by Councilman Wu and seconded by Councilman Johnson. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Johnson?
Aye.
Spence?
No.
Toma?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Warsha?
Aye. Motion passes four one. We'll now move on to item number 23. This matter set for a public hearing consists of an opportunity to receive input from the community regarding the creation of the City Council District Boundaries for district-based city council elections. This is the first of four public hearings that will be held regarding the creation of city council district boundaries. Will the city clerk please verify that the proper legal notice has been given?
So verified.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing. All persons who desire to be heard will have an opportunity to speak during the public comment portion of this hearing. First, we will have a staff presentation, and then move to the public comment portion of the hearing. Mr. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Our city attorney, Kimberly Hall Barlow, as well as our deputy city manager, Laura Minnick, will be presenting tonight's staff report.
Thank you.
Mayor, and members of the council, we do have a PowerPoint for you, and frankly, primarily for the public, because we wanted to give a little bit of history, remind everybody sort of how we got here, and how this process will move forward. It's not a single public hearing item, like so many, that you do have to deal with, and so we want to make sure people are clear on when and how they can provide this input. So, so, we did have a lawsuit that was filed under the California Voting Rights Act. The California Voting Rights Act prohibits use of at-large election systems which impair the ability of minority communities to elect candidates of their choice. The city entered into a settlement agreement in February of this year, having adopted both a districting ordinance, as well as taking an action to move the city's elections to November, even numbered years, so that the next election will be November of 2018. So now, where we go next? The law changed in January, January 1st, so that the process is a little bit more involved now than it used to be. We go through a public engagement and mapping process. The council has already approved a contract with a demographer, that was done in May. A demographer is a professional who gathers all kinds of data about numbers of people, where they reside, how they're registered to vote, who, who is and isn't registered to vote, the demographics of the different areas in the city, and he will draw maps based upon all this community input. You then, last month, adopted a community participation plan, which Ms. Minnick will be going over some of the details of that. This is the first public hearing on this item, so we're now really kicking off the process. We're going to be having at least four public hearings, and we expect those to go probably until November, possibly they will be completed sooner, but because of how the plan works, we'll be doing some community meetings in addition to the public hearings, to get the word out, to get, get people involved in the mapping process, so they can figure out how to do it, and, and what the relevant criteria are. Ultimately, the council is required to select a map and adopt an ordinance with the boundaries and the designation of the Order of Districts for Election by December the 16th, and then the first district-based election will take place in November of 2018. And we have some legal requirements set forth in both federal and state law, as well as sort of reiterated in the settlement agreement. We have federal laws that require, and state laws both, that require that we have our districts be of equal proportion, roughly equal, within a pretty small percentage typically. We also are required to keep them contiguous, compact, we, we look at territory, geography, and so on. We're not supposed to be drawing gerrymandered funny lines in order to disadvantage or, or advantage anybody. What we're supposed to be doing is looking at communities of interest, and, and how the communities work together. We look at neighborhoods, and school districts, and attendance areas, and what the physical layout, we look at breaks, natural barriers, like arterials, or, or the freeway, or other kinds of things that really separate areas of the community in such a way that it makes sense to group them in particular ways. We also look at, in the demographer process, socioeconomic characteristics, income, homeownership, the age of housing, the length of residence, and how those things affect the communities of interest. For example, single-family residential neighborhoods may have very different communities of interest than areas which are largely apartment complexes or multifamily housing. And so we look at those kinds of things to see how the communities of interest shake out. We also look at political participation, voter registration and voter turnout, the Latino share, the Asian share, in, in this community, we'll, we'll be looking at also specific Filipino, which is part of the Asian share, it gets kind of confused sometimes, but also the black and the non-Latino white category, just to take a look at how the demographics are spread out through the city. So following the first two public hearings, then we're, that'll be the first opportunity to draw maps, the demographer will take the public input into account, he will draw some sample maps, some draft maps, they won't be necessarily the final maps that will be presented to the council, but they will be put on the website, they'll go out to these community meetings, people can provide comments on them and input to them, so that maybe tweaks can be made based upon all the community input. Then we will bring those maps back after the first round of community meetings for another public hearing. There's also going to be community participation kits that will be posted on the website that will show people how to create their own district maps with the data that's available, so that members of the public can submit maps as well. When we have those maps, and the, any, any publicly submitted maps will be evaluated by the demographer to tell you whether they're legal, whether they're, you know, they meet the, the necessary criteria under both state and federal law, and then we'll have two public hearings. What the law now requires is that the map that's ultimately adopted have been considered at two public hearings. So if at that third public hearing, where you're first considering maps, changes get made to any of the draft maps in front of you, then we'll have to have two more public hearings, as opposed to just one more. But in any event, as I say, additional public hearings will be required, that's how the process works. There will be three city council seats up for election in November of 2018. Part of the process will be designating which districts will, will be those three that go up. Under the terms of the settlement agreement, one of the districts must be the district which has elected the fewest residents in the past 10 years. And, one of the three.
One of the three.
That's correct, one of the three. And, and what I have done with the demographer is, we have agreed that in order to preclude any possibility that, that there could be a claim, that the demographers are considering either the current council members' residence locations, or the previously elected or possible candidate's resident locations, we will be providing residence addresses only for that analysis, without providing the information to the demographer about who lives there and when they were elected. They will provide that information, and then a separate demographer will actually do that analysis. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, and then I believe that Ms. Minnick will be doing, talking about the community participation plan.
Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you're talking about this mapping, okay, you kind of talk about some of the, you have to base on, okay, race, right? You mentioned about Filipino, Asian, and Latino.
We look, we look at that information, we want to know how the communities are reflected in the existing...
But still, it's just one of the criteria that you, we have based on that, so it kind of sound like a race basis, to me.
It is one of many. What the law precludes, what the law precludes...
Yes, but, but even law preclude, but still, that is one of criteria to seek about the different race, whether the boundary and this.
Yes, sir.
So for me to see, it's very divided, okay, the, where the Asian live, okay, and where the Latino, okay, live, and where is the, the, okay, Caucasian, okay? So, so, and, and I think recently, the Supreme Court already have a decision that this street is forbidden based on the race, right? Okay, and it's what they to do with our district, will, will we have a chance to, to fight for this? Hey, I'm a minority, okay, so winning this district, if I go to this, maybe, okay, I have a better chance, but for the common good, for the entire city, okay, I think a divide to fight this street, I still strongly against. But what I'm saying is, do we have any legal, okay, remedy based on the Supreme Court coming out right now, okay, and do we still have to continue to do what we doing, and if we won't do it, then we're going to have a continual lawsuit with them?
Well, I would say no, and, and the reason is that frankly, I think before the recent decision, it was already illegal to, to district purely on the racist base, and that was what was going on in that case. Neither state law nor federal law permits that. We, we didn't promise to do that, I wouldn't allow you to do that. It is, as I say, one of many factors. I haven't actually looked at the demographic maps of, of the city at this point, but it's certainly, from everything I've heard, this is a fairly integrated community. We're going to be looking at all of those factors, not so that we can draw districts based on race, but rather so that we can use that as one of many factors to consider in communities of interest. Now, there will be people who will tell you that they don't consider that a matter related to community of interest, and others will say they do. What we're required to do is to take all of that public input, whichever the, whatever the viewpoint is, about what really makes up a, a neighborhood, an area that should stay together. Some people will look at, you know, what the school district lines are, some people will look at things like, you know, how properties might surround recreational areas, other people are going to look at where people vote together, or where, where people, you know, recreate or go to church together. So all of those things are going to be things that the members of the public may consider, they provide that input, the demographer draws a variety of maps, and then ultimately, you make the decision about what those districts look like.
Yeah, and, and actually, if I understand this right, we're not obligated as council to adopt any of the things that are submitted to us, right? We can make changes in that.
That's correct, as long as the final map that you adopt has been considered at at least two public hearings.
Right, correct, after we would, like, if we didn't like any of the maps, for whatever reason, and we made changes, then I would have to present twice.
Absolutely, the, the courts are very clear, that the legislative authority of this council to draw those maps is, is not to be interfered with.
I, I have a question. Would it be fair to say that 40% of West Covina will not get to vote for a city council member in 2018? Is that a fair statement?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, well, clearly, they've been empowered, those 40,000. But I had a question about the second demographer, because we approved one demographer...
It's the same firm?
And they'll have someone...
It's a different individual, so that they won't be...
And, I mean, my understanding is that is based on where people ran for office initially, is that correct?
That's correct, where, where they were elected from.
Where they were elected from?
Yes.
Right, not where they... Right, not where they currently live.
No, sir.
Is there any other questions from staff? Okay, with that, comments from the public will be most.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, oh, go ahead.
If I may. Sorry, just to build on to City Attorney Kimberly Hall Barlow's comments tonight, I did want to go over the community participation side of tonight's presentation with regard to the creation of city council voting districts. So before you have just passed out to council and to our staff here, and then as well as we have available, our city manager, Mr. Freeland, has available for those in the audience that would like to receive one, a copy of what is called our Public Participation Districting Kit, also known as a Community Participation Kit. This is available on the city's website at westcovina.org/districts. That is our user-friendly website where you can find out all the information, the history on districting, how we got to this point, what the next steps are, and how you can actually create a map yourself to submit for consideration as part of the process. So just to kind of go through this for those of you that are here with us and the viewing audience at home, on the first page, it just kind of outlines what's included in the packet. What you are receiving is what's called the PDF version, the printed copy version. The Excel file will be available later this week on the city's website, but the PDF version is available up there now currently as well as in your hands right now. What you're being asked to do is if you would like to participate in designing and drawing your own districts, you're going to be creating five council districts. That's five council districts, and they need to be roughly the equal in population. So those are the instructions that are being given to you there. You can then submit those various ways. You can submit it by mail. You can drop it off at City Hall here in the city clerk's office or in the city manager's office at City Hall. You can also email. You can take a picture and email your file over to westcovina@ndcresearch.com. NDC is the demographer company that the city has consulted with that is overseeing this process. And you can also call our consultants. Both Douglas Johnson and Justin Levitt are available by phone, and their contact information is listed on that front page. You then get into the second page of the document, which just kind of talks about the requirements by law, again, reiterating the necessary, that it's nearly equal in population for each of these five districts, that we cannot be racially gerrymandering, as you heard Ms. Hall Barlow speak to that tonight. Then you get into the next page, which starts to give you the demographic details and the demographic profile for the city of West Covina. This is all based on census data that was gathered and submitted. And then finally, we start looking into the different mapping options. So they've divided the city up by total population unit, and you can see that there. And they've given you identifier markers for each of those population areas, numerically as well as how many people are in those population areas. And then from there, you've got additional information based on race regarding each of those population areas, specific to the voting age population, and continuing further into the document, on the final pages is where you have your blank maps for your proposal submissions. Now, these, we're asking that you not do them in color unless you're going to be able to photograph or submit your items in color. Then you can go ahead and use colored pencils or colored markers. But we do prefer that you just use a thick, dark-colored pen when drawing your map. There are three samples in there that you can utilize, blank maps. You can also print as many copies as you would like from the city's website. And again, that's at westcovina.org/districts where you can find those. So those are our community participation kits. In addition to being able to submit your own map yourself via email, fax, dropping it off in person, you can also participate in tonight's public hearing. We're going to have a second public hearing on August 15th, also here in the council chambers on a Tuesday evening. That's our regular council meeting that night where you can also provide input. And we're going to be having several community outreach meetings where we'll be going out into the public at various locations between now and August 15th and again thereafter to get feedback from the community and hear from you directly. You can also reach out to city staff at any point in time. Our contact information, again, is located on the city's website, westcovina.org/districts, where you can find out how to contact us should you have any questions about districting or how to design and draw your own map. Now, our community participation and outreach efforts will, of course, also not only include our city's website, we do have our e-notification process. So if you want to sign up to receive emails about any of those community participation meetings, we are going to be sending out a direct email to those that have signed up already about when those meetings will be held, and also to give them a direct link to both the PDF version of the community participation mapping kits as well as the Excel file once that is up and ready. The outreach will also include social media, reaching out to our different community service groups, our neighborhood associations, our elected officials. We've got several different databases that we'll be utilizing at the city, both our boards and commissions, our Discover West Covina City Newsletter and Community Recreation Guide, as well as through Greater West Covina Business Association, our business license list, and our school districts. As I mentioned before, we're going to be using several different forms of communication to reach our different residents that would be interested in this process, and I am available to answer any questions that you might have about the community participation side or the community participation kits.
Mayor Protem Spence.
Yeah, both, all this stuff's going to be on the website too, right?
It is already up on the website currently.
Both the slides and all this stuff. Can you explain, like, how did the population units get created? Are those census tracts?
That's from, yes, that's census information.
Okay, so this is all census tracts?
Yes, sir.
For example, so like, to get, we can't split census tracts, or how does that work with drawing maps?
There's some flexibility there, but it's difficult. As you can see, the total population of these tracks is fairly small. So it tends to get a little difficult to try and split them. So the lines tend to be drawn along.
Census tracts.
Along census track lines.
Unless it skews the population or some community interests, is that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Toma.
So in this day and age, I thought that there'd be some electronic way of just like clicking on the square so that you could easily sum the total, which would be a lot faster than. Yeah, so I get this is one way. Is there another way that's foreseen where you could just sort of click, 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 and then it will total the numbers so that it'll make it easier for people to actually calculate this, because it's going to take them a really long time if they had to hand.
I think the Excel spreadsheet will do that.
Yes, so there's the Excel file option, which isn't necessarily going to allow you to click, click, click via MAP and a GIS type of system. A more robust GIS system would be fantastic, and I know that was part of our IT master plan.
Very expensive.
And it's something that is foreshadowed for in the future for West Covina. But at this point in time, the ability to click, click, click and have it totaled is not available. However, the Excel file that will be available and uploaded to the website later this week will allow you to select which districts or which, excuse me, not districts, which census tracts that you are interested in, and then it will total that for you.
And then, I don't know if you mentioned this, but will there be a blown-up version of these maps so that, I mean, some of these, I think, would be obvious in terms of maybe streets, but a lot of them would not be. Is there a blown-up version of this that will be on the website, that people actually can see more easily where these lines lie with respect to street names and that kind of thing?
We can work with the demographer to provide that. I know that the plan is at the community meetings and certainly when we bring draft maps forward to have blowups so that you can very clearly see where the major arterials and so on are in the maps.
Are there any other council comments?
I'm finished drawing again. We're done.
I will now move on to public comment. Comments from the public will be most helpful within the following five main areas. However, all comments are welcome as part of tonight's public hearing. Those five main areas are neighborhoods or communities that should be kept together, neighborhoods or communities that share common interests or should be combined with a district, physical features such as streets, utilities, or other elements that could act as a natural barrier between districts, communities that are dissimilar and should be put into separate districts, and fifth, significant location of points of interest that are particular interest to the individual community. My first speaker is Fred Sykes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and the audience. I'm Frederick Sykes, and some time ago, I got involved in this endeavor to create districts. And it started with just the idea of protecting the park near my home, Shadow Park, that's 25 acres. And it was a promise that was given to my community. And that's what gave me the motivation to come here, was to simply protect that promise. As I got involved with the fight to save the park and keep the 25 acres intact, I began to learn quite a bit about my community that I hadn't really understood and didn't really know about the community. And at one time, it was called Woodside Land, which is 23 acres of planned community that was promised to the homebuyers back in the 1970s. Most of the original homebuyers were working-class people who assumed mortgages and focused on paying for their homes. And we did not pay much attention to City Hall. As a matter of fact, most of my community still do not pay much attention to City Hall. In 2006, we were fighting to save the park from being sold to land developers. I learned about some public land that we taxpayers had paid for and lost. We did not get the library that had been promised to us. That was to be a regional park where now we have a business called Big League Dreams. We were supposed to get an elementary school that should have been attached to Gingrich Park. There was supposed to have been a high school that's now a church and, of course, attached to that area with lots of paseos and green belts. We also lost Shakespeare Park, which was 13 acres. It's now known as Sycamore Glen, Sagittarius community now with a park inside that facility. It's a housing unit that's, or development that consists of about 68 houses. So in 2006, we learned that since 1923, only two people from my community had been voted to the city council. And so the area south of Francisco was oftentimes represented, underrepresented, and that's the case today. We have nobody that lives down in that part of town that is on the council. And so from my perspective, we're just establishing voting districts in an effort to get fair and equal representation citywide at City Hall. And we're trying to create a city council that has a voice and a vested interest from every part of our city. No less, no more, just fairness. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, did you want to speak?
Yeah, my name is Alfred Williams, 40-plus resident, year resident of West Covina. I just had some questions that I, then the staff report that, and also in this, I guess, guide that we just got, it defines an ideal district population as being 21,000 people, and that's based upon a population of 106,000. Well, I think there's a problem there because not 100, that includes children and people who don't really vote. So a real census would include, Mr. Spence, will you keep your gestures to yourself, please? You're not really talking about children and other people voting. You're talking about registered voters who are going to, are trying to determine what they should do in the city. The other thing is, there's barriers in the report, and I can't understand how identifying physical streets, utilities, and other things can actually affect districts. I'm having a hard time picturing that. Maybe someone, maybe Ms. Barlow can explain that, or Chris, I don't know. And then also points of interest. I don't know how this can affect how districts are decided. Do we put something because we got Heritage Park over there? I don't know. Do we put something because we got a park over here? I don't know. Some of these things seem to not make sense to me, and maybe someone can explain it to me. The other thing is, I would like to point out that this really has nothing to do with race, and everyone wants to point to race. I'm here, blacks make up only 4% of West Covina. We couldn't affect anything that happens in West Covina if we tried. We could get every, all 4% to show up, and we still probably couldn't get anybody on them, okay? So it's not about race, and I'm not here about race. It's about polarized voting, and we've had quite a bit of that in the city of West Covina. And I'd like to bring up something that happened the other, at one of your meetings. I had a past council member that was showing up at the meetings, and he was outside, and he says, "Do all your meetings go on till 11 o'clock at night?" I said, "We've had quite a few." And he said, "Well, that should never happen because we used to have that stuff decided before we got here." And I wanted to tell him then, which I didn't, that was the problem. I would rather see a meeting go to 11 o'clock at night than have somebody make a decision for me outside this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards, but Jerry, if you'd like to speak.
Do you have another card?
Yeah.
Community of interest, to me, is very clear. I'm glad to see they're dealing with socioeconomics because I think that is very important. With the previous council, I came to a council meeting and I learned that I was in a low-income district, which was really a surprise to me. I'm concerned that the city's various designated areas that you use for other issues, light manufacturing, all of that needs to get factored into these things. The mall is a big concern. Different schools, and this was interesting, because people take sociology and anthropology classes, they learn a lot about neighborhoods, I have, okay? And that's my concern. I have a perfect street for me. It's very diverse in occupational, ethnic, religion. How we factor these things in and how we relate to our own little neighborhoods, neighborhood watch, all of that stuff factors in. I don't want to see the fact that I'm in a low-income, one of the cities too designated income, low-income groups are on my side of the freeway, and that bothers me a lot because I don't want to see a district of low-income, designated low-income people, even though I don't think we are necessarily that way. Different school districts, that part was fascinating. We relate to where we live. I have Azusa Light and Water. That drives me nuts, okay? It's awful. But those of us in that area relate to that and all of the things that that neighborhood has to deal with, with the brown shirt guy driving through our neighborhoods writing tickets. I am concerned that these districts, when I listen to people, when I start coming here, you'd think the. you'd think the only part of West Covina is South Hills or Shadow Oaks. Those of us that live in my side of the freeway, we also don't think our trees get trimmed and our roads are taken care of and everything. It's because the city doesn't have all the money that we think it should have because it's all committed. I am very concerned that this is going to change my city in ways I don't want. I want to see five people working together, and these neighborhoods, this criteria is going to change things. Please factor in low-income designated areas, all of these manufacturing areas and all of that, because it does make a difference. I relate, my neighbors relate to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speaker card. Herb Ruhl, would you like to speak?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, I'm just gonna take another perspective here. I think it's a shame that a mere eight years after the voters voted overwhelmingly huge numbers to not-go districts. That was Measure D back in 2009. I was very involved in that no-on-D movement, and it was resoundly defeated. And here we are just a few years later, and the voter's decision is, is meaningless. And I think with the overwhelming defeat of districts, that was, the voters who participated were of, I would have to believe, from all walks of life, different economics, different races, religions, came together to, to say, "We don't want districts." And we had a speaker, uh, one thing I want to make very clear to all of the residents and voters, with this, you are giving up your right to vote for 80% of the City Council. You will only vote for the councilperson in your particular district and never have the opportunity to vote the other four in or out of office. Keep that in mind. A lady, very nice lady, earlier spoke that she's all for it and in favor of it because now she can go to her person, and that person's gonna take care of it because I can call that person. That's great. Right, right now, I can call five of you, not just one, and you know what? That one, this was the issue back in '09, that one person that you elect may have a different opinion. He may not be on your side for that one item. And guess what? You got nowhere else to go. You're now done. Because the other four people go, "Ah, it's too bad." They're still gonna be able to spend your tax money, you know, it's gonna create little fiefdoms. These are the same issues that were prevalent during the '09 election that went to the people, as Mayor Protem Spence wanted to, wanted to do with it, went to the people who were soundly defeated, and through smoke and mirrors and, you know, lawyers and, you know, you, even if you win, you lose, and it doesn't make any difference, it's gonna cost billions of dollars, I get all of that. But the bottom line is, it's a bad move. It's gonna change this city forever, and it's never gonna go back. And I understand if I was sitting over there and I'm looking at multi-millions of dollars of potential losses after, you know, paying legal fees, their fees, our fees, okay, it's tough. It's a tough decision. It's, it's like you're being, and I said it before, you know, you're being, it's, you know, a blackmail, you know? It's pretty much what it is. And we got our heads, you know, we're, we're over a barrel. It's a tough choice. It's a tough choice. But at the end of the day, it's the residents and the voters that are gonna lose because they're just not gonna be able to exercise the, their, their, the right to vote. That's the big issue, that's the problem, and, you know, to me, I, I think it, it's gonna, it's, it's not good. And I, and I feel for you, having to make the decision, but at the end of the day, it's not gonna be to the benefit of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you make sure you, uh, fill out a card, please? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will, uh, close the, uh, public comment portion of this and ask the council if they have any further questions or discussions. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I do have, um, a couple concerns. And one is, and especially with the adoption of the general plan that this council made, is that, uh, the density and the kinds of things that are planned for downtown, um, it's all about downtown. And yet downtown may only end up with one representative depending on how lines are drawn. And I'm really concerned about that because you have then three or four council people who don't understand that town, that part of town, don't understand the impact of the traffic and the density of taking away roads for bike lanes and all that kind of stuff have on the single-family homes that still exist around downtown. And so I do, I'm concerned that downtown, you know, I don't know which way to go. Does downtown get cut in half, the downtown defined by this council, by the way, but not by, that didn't exist until then, but does that all get, you know, does our, do those whole, does that section end up in one place? So they only get one person, you know, and then who eventually the single-family homes get, uh, the single-family homeowners, you know, get voted out, you know, by the high-density, you know, voters that are moving into all the houses? And yet that's the financial engine that the city sees as, um, you know, doing things. Or does it split it up and dilute it? I mean, I'm really concerned about how we view that area because of, you know, the way we've designed that general plan, it's, and it's what we're counting on, you know, as far as all the housing, all the, all those things are in downtown. You know, so I am concerned about that. I don't know how we separate that, to deal with it as community interests. Obviously, I'm partial to school districts being part of it, you know, there are people, you know, it's crazy the way the lines are drawn, you know, on Cortez right across the street, right underneath the freeway, which by the way, is a road that you can use as far as districting, these big roads, that's how you do them. Um, uh, you know, there's a bus that comes out to get kids from the left side of Cortez to go, to give you the alley, that go to a different high school than the ones on the right side, you know? And so they could be neighbors, but they don't really know each other because they don't go to school altogether. And so, you know, I'm sensitive to those kind of lines too, even though they go under freeways and that kind of stuff, so I'm sensitive to those. I do have to say, I'm stunned that plaintiff who sued us to do districts does not understand redistricting and what gets counted. I mean, that is appalling to me. And, uh, I do want to give another history lesson. Mr. Sykes, you're right. No one's been elected since 1923 to your area. Uh, only two people, three counting you. Uh, that's because West Covina did not exist down there in 1923. It didn't exist. It wasn't part of it. Go to the history of West Covina. You know, you can't say, "We haven't had representation since 1923," when it wasn't part of West Covina. That's not fair. So, you know, if you look at the 91790 part of West Covina, um, south of the freeway, there hasn't been anyone that's represented that area on this council since Dick Lewis, who was appointed, never elected, and lost. And that was when? 1970? Something like that? Until I was elected. I never felt underrepresented. So, you know, for people to get up and change the history of West Covina and pretend they didn't know what they were suing about, I, I don't think that's helpful. You know, let's focus on the communities of interest, but I'm really concerned, things are being jammed into downtown at the expense of single-family residents there, and I'm not sure how they're gonna get the voice heard, um, with how it's gonna be divided up. Because it's easy to delight, dilute those votes, but packing them all in one district, you know, uh, like I've said before, we'd probably have BKK open if we could pack everyone into a district. They would have packed all those anti-BKK voters into one district. They'd had a great anti-BKK guy on the council, and they'd have four people spending all the money, um, that BKK provided. So I'm really concerned about how we represent that part of, um, West Covina in, in the district and incorporate that, since they're taking the brunt of the council's actions. Anyways.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to add a couple of points to address some of the questions.
Yeah, I would like for you to be able to answer Mr. Williams', uh, questions on, uh, population and who, why you count all people as opposed to just registered voters.
The law requires that we count individuals, not voters. Um, we have to divide the districts equally. That's a matter of federal law. And, uh, they have to be very close. There's a, you know, obviously a 1% or 2%, but, um, they, they shouldn't be, uh, too far off. We also, um, I understand from Mr. Williams' perspective, the issue wasn't race. The CVRA is about racially polarized voting. That's what the showing required is. And I don't know, you know, what, I mean, I don't know why anybody voted for it or against it in 2009, um, but, but be that as it may. I do want to address too, the, the income is a factor. Um, I think Mr. Williams also had a question about barriers, um, and points of interest. So when we're looking at barriers, uh, we're looking at a freeway, um, a, a, an irrigation channel or a drainage channel that really separates neighborhoods where they back up to each other, they don't do anything together. Uh, we're looking at, um, things like, we've heard people say Shadow Oak Park is their park. That's part of their community. The people who don't go to Shadow Oak Park or don't use Shadow Oak Park may not think of the people that live around it as part of their community of interest or their neighborhood. So those are the kinds of points of interest we're talking about. It could be everything from homeowners' associations, it could be, uh, as I say, recreational facilities, it could be churches, it could be a whole number of things that people factor into, "This is what my neighborhood is about." Um, and I finally want to address one, one question or issue that, um, Councilman Spence has raised, and that's the downtown. Obviously, we're looking at numbers from the 2010 census that don't reflect what the current population is and what the future anticipated population is. So one of the things we'll be talking to the demographer about is how we can bring in some of the, you know, updated data from the community, uh, survey, which would have been from the middle from 2015.
Right. So this, uh, speaking of that, because this uses 2010, uh, census data, and there'll be another census in 2020, when do we have to go through this again?
Yes. So the, the maps that you select here will be used for 2018 and 2020, and then when we get the 2020 census data, then we'll be doing, uh, uh, we'll be looking at the maps to see whether the district lines have to be adjusted. And if the general plan projections bear out, then yes, you'll be, you'll be doing some adjustments to those districts.
And that would be for the 2022 election?
That's correct. Um, with respect to the downtown, you know, different cities have taken completely different approaches to how they address the downtown area of their community to the extent that they have a downtown. Whittier's uptown area was mainly kept intact. Pasadena's downtown area was mostly kept intact. Fullerton decided to divide its downtown so that, um, every, every mem- member of the council represents some portion of the downtown. Some people thought that was terrible because the downtown was one community. Um, other people thought that was a great idea because the downtown wasn't one community in their mind. There were, there were businesses, there were apartments, there were single-family, it was historical, but this is all about West Covina and what is right for West Covina. The, it, there's no one-size-fits-all solution. So you're gonna have a lot of, uh, difficult analysis, I think, when, at the end of the day, but it will be your call.
Thank you. Councilman, will?
Just a following question for the city attorney. Okay, you're talking about 2020. Is, if 2018 coming up, majority of the city council want to reverse back to, at large, can we do that?
Majority of the council can do anything. That doesn't mean you won't get sued. We do have a settlement agreement. And if, if that were something that was, uh, majority of the council wanted to think about, I would hope that we could have a discussion about how that would impact the settlement before that decision would get made.
Councilman Toma.
Yeah, so talking about the fact that in 2020 it would have to be revised, are you allowed to, on the margins, I understood you earlier on said that generally you try and keep the census tracts probably intact just for, um, practical purposes, but can you take into consideration to the extent that there are some imbalances, just because there'd be naturally some imbalances, like the projected numbers to minimize the adjustments that you might have to make in 2020? So for example, went through the general plan, and because so many people said they didn't want their single-family home residences impacted by population growth, which we're required to do like every other city, most all of our projected growth is in, is in a general area, right? So we know going forward that that is the plan. Can you take that into consideration where there's gonna be natural, you're never gonna have perfect symmetry of whatever you're saying, 21,000, whatever it is? Is that a, um, is that a, a criteria that we're allowed to use? And then similarly, to the extent that there's, I understand by law, you're supposed to do it by population, but if certain areas have more voters than others, again, on the margins, could you take that into consideration for that to, to check like small differences?
Yes, there's, there's some flexibility there, and I think the, uh, with respect to say the downtown area, we know, for example, that one of the, uh, tracts or, or parcels, whatever you would call it, unit numbers, that's designated in these documents says zero population, but that's where the lake says. And we know it's not zero population now. Um, we also know that, you're right, we're projecting, um, increases in population in certain areas. We do have some flexibility. I think the, the chart shows, for example, that the numbers, you could go, um, between 20,159 and 22,281. So you could make some adjustments in what those districts look like in terms of their numbers to account for some of that future anticipated growth. Likewise, you could do, we can look at voting age population, citizen voting age population, um, to make some appropriate adjustments so long as we stay within the numbers and we're not making adjustments based only on race.
So on that, on that point, that's a hard ceiling in terms of the, the deviation 10%?
If it were bigger than that, we, we, yeah, we'd have a problem. Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Okay, with that, there's no action required by council at tonight's meeting, as this is the first, uh, of multiple public hearings on the creation of district boundaries. This concludes the public hearing tonight on the creation of district boundaries for district-based city council elections. Our next public hearing on this item will be on Tuesday, August 15th. Individuals interested in learning more may visit the city's website at www.westcovina.org/districts. We'll now move on to item number 24.
Yeah. No, what's happened?
What? No, that's 24. Yeah.
No, you're right. 24. Drones.
Item number 24 is unmanned aerial, uh, aerial vehicle drones. Who will give the staff report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a follow-up to a request that Councilmember Toma brought up at a previous meeting, as I, mother, may I? Um, city staff has, actually, the West Covina Police Department and the city staff here have put together a report based on information from Los Angeles, um, City of Los Angeles ordinance, as well as the League of California Cities. So I'm gonna turn over to, um, to Captain Doug Murray to give a report.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. Item 24 in front of you is a informational report prepared by the police department on the topic of unmanned aerial vehicles or drones, as we'll use for the balance of the report. These devices have gained a lot of popularity, both with hobbyists, with the film industry, even some aspects of government, um, and clearly they have a military application in the more advanced-type devices. Um, California law is essentially silent on the criminal coverage of these devices as they're used today. And what many jurisdictions have done throughout the state, including, um, as you can see in the report, the City of Los Angeles and the City of Beverly Hills, is they've actually incorporated local ordinances to cover the use of these devices. Los Angeles' ordinance, which I actually have up on the board behind me, um, was originally enacted in 1979 in response to an overall park conduct ordinance, which included things like smoking and other conduct in their city parks and in the harbor, that included the use of, basically at that time, remote control aircraft. So the, the hobbyist pilots that would use them in the city parks, the city wanted to have some control and regulation over where they were flown and not flown. some control and regulation over where they were flown and not flown. As drones hit the scene, they became much simpler to fly. They can be flown with an iPad, they can be flown with a set of virtual display goggles with a camera mounted on the bottom of the device. They're very, very simple. My, my 12-year-old son, at the time he was 12, could fly one with his iPhone. Pretty simple devices, ranging from very, very basic and inexpensive ones to very, very expensive and complicated ones, including ones that can carry significant payload even from a commercial setting. The City of Los Angeles started seeing flights going over the port, which is a high-threat infrastructure item, obviously for the City of Los Angeles and a terrorist target, so they wanted to have a little more local control over whether these flights would continue over the port. They evaluated the original ordinance, the 63.44 ordinance, and found that while there was some relevance, they couldn't restrict people from taking off from legal areas within the city and then flying over the port, which caused a great deal of grief for the city. Simultaneously, they had events where they had certain activists actually flying the drones into police station parking lots, overseeing the transportation of prisoners from the backs of police cars into the jail facility, watching other critical infrastructure, and other things that were, was causing some, some security problems for not only the police department, but then these hobbyists actually were taking the drones up to an elevation where they were interfering with the police aircraft. For a turbine helicopter that's flying at, you know, 400 to 600 feet off the ground at any given time, an impact with the main rotor, the tail rotor, or the input for the turbine is going to prove disastrous, not only for the air crew, but also for people on the ground when that 5,000 pounds comes crashing down with, loaded with jet fuel. So LA decided to adopt another ordinance, which specifically addresses drones, which is 56.31. And in this one, they cleaned up all the language of the prior ordinance that, that said what a drone was and wasn't, and it encompassed much more of what we see today in terms of the drone market than the traditional remote control aircraft hobbyist. Taking you to the B section, this is where the actual teeth of the ordinance comes to be. They don't want any flights in the City of Los Angeles within five miles of any airport. And obviously, that wouldn't have relevance for what we do in West Covina, because we don't have an airport, but the El Monte Airport is nearby, and, you know, whether El Monte wants to enact something that prohibits a future flight that in their own airport would, would be on them, although I don't know we would be able to necessarily have any enforceability on El Monte's airport within West Covina city limits. So that's a little bit difficult. They don't want them flown in a manner that interferes with manned aircraft, like we talked about in the LAPD ord, situation. They actually had one that caused the pilot in an LAPD aircraft to have to take a 200-foot descent emergency action to avoid impacting a drone that was basically placed in their flight path, so somebody could film them. They ended up locating the operator on the ground and arresting him because they had this ordinance in place. They require that the operator of the device not use any unaided means of maintaining visual contact with the drone. Many of these drones, and we've actually tested some of them here, have a virtual reality goggle that goes over the operator's head, and it's like you're flying on the thing. Well, that, that creates some special problems, which doesn't get addressed by LA's ordinance, where you could literally fly this thing with an infrared camera up to somebody's bedroom window and violate people in their, in their most private moments. LA's ordinance tended to stick with the public safety aspect and the aviation safety aspect of it, whereas the Beverly Hills ordinance that we also examined goes specifically on the privacy aspect. The city also requires that all flights occur during daylight. There's a documented case where somebody flying a drone at night actually impacted high-tension wires, blew out a transformer and left, you know, several thousand residents without electricity because they are out flying their drone around at night. They require that the maximum flight level is 100, or, sorry, 400 feet above ground level, so depending on terrain, whatever the actual elevation is above that ground line, no more than 400 feet, that's for the risk of manned aircraft in the area. And some of these aircraft can go up to several thousand feet up in the air, based on their line of sight from the transmitter. And the safety aspect, they don't want drones flown closer than 25 feet to any person. Obviously, takeoff and landings with the operator is something that's going to have to be accepted, but they don't want the drones to be used to chase people down the street. In researching some of these technologies, these drones can be set up where you can actually use your camera from the drone, touch a target on the ground that's moving, and the drone will follow the person. So they can actually be used to somewhat stalk people without their knowledge, and that's probably not a good thing for us either. The balance of the act is, follows guidelines and recommendations from the California League of Cities with regards to a model drone ordinance, where you can impose certain restrictions during the course of emergencies, you can impose compliance with federal FAA standards, you can impose compliance on things that are going to be the unusual circumstances. I was in Laguna Beach over the weekend, and they had enacted a temporary no-flight area over their pageant that they had going down, down in the city, where they had posted on all ways into town, no drone flights over the event. So it gives some, some flexibility to the city to do stuff. There's two competing schools of thoughts on preemption, so there are some FAA ordinances that have a little bit to do with the coverage of drones, although probably the one thing that would have been the most helpful for our city was the registration requirement for drone operators paid their $5 to the FAA, and at least we had an idea of who was flying drones in this city and who wasn't. The Supreme Court recently chimed in on that and said that that is not constitutional, that's been stricken. And basically, we're left with very little federal backing in terms of what can and cannot be done with these devices. The California League of Cities' position is that cities are not preempted from enacting local ordinances because the FAA is effectively silent on this with the reduction of the registration requirement. And the state of California, most of the effort taken to regulate the drone industry has not made it past the governor's desk. So really, the City of LA, when they enacted their ordinance, they got an opinion from the FAA that contradicted the California League of Cities, that the FAA believed that federal law would preempt California or municipalities from imposing local ordinances upon their residences. But they chose to go ahead and enact it anyway and would contend with that issue if they were ever challenged on the, on the supremacy clause. That essentially...
You say that that's the challenge?
It is not the challenge, no. And that essentially ends the narrative of the report. The council has several options. You can take no option, take no action at all whatsoever if you choose to do so. But there's a lot of different things to consider when you decide on where you want to go with an ordinance or not. Our recommendation is that you include a privacy aspect in the ordinance, because I think we're leaving our residents open to having their privacy invaded if we don't have some means of addressing it at the local level. We also have to make a determination on whether we want this to be a misdemeanor criminal act on some of these offenses, or an administrative sanction-only that our code enforcement can deal with, a mixed variety of administrative and misdemeanor conduct. We just have to be willing to understand that the burden is going to fall on the city attorney's office to prosecute criminal sanctions of, or violations of the section, as the DA's office is not going to pursue those on our behalf. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions.
So in regards to freedom of the press using it, have there been any court decisions on that? And also with companies like Google and Amazon and others getting ready to use drones, how would that affect a city ordinance?
A little bit of it remains to be seen. The, the Amazon proposal is pretty lofty. I'm not sure that they're quite ready to go there yet, although I would anticipate that at a point where we're seeing point-of-sale items being delivered to people's homes, we should probably see the state stepping in and imposing something statewide that would regulate that, that section of commerce involving Amazon and other entities. It's very reasonable to provide an exception for a safe operation of a delivery service, and we could make that part of our ordinance, we could wait for the state to take some action in that direction. I almost assume that the FAA would have to step in at that point, because I can't see Amazon limiting their sales to California.
And how about with the press using it?
The press has a right to be where they can be now, so if they're there in a helicopter, and it's a safe distance, I can't see a problem with them being at the scene of anything other than an emergency at lower than 400 feet and getting what they needed to get. In fairness to them, I believe it's, if it's properly communicated and they understand the risks that we face, their pilots face very similar risks when they're flying manned aircraft and they have to deal with drones in their flight path.
I'm, I'm thinking more of, let's say you're surrounding a house, and they want to bring it right up to the window. That could be a danger.
I think that would be one of those, those exceptions, that we would be able to declare an emergency or disaster scene and preclude them from actually being there. There's been instances where a live public safety event will be going on, and we can actually get the FAA to give us a temporary, temporary flight restriction over that airspace, which precludes even news helicopters from entering into that for a temporary basis.
If I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, obviously, there's a concern about the First Amendment sort of paparazzi kind of issue where they are trying to look. The First Amendment has its limits, and there is a, at least in the state of California, there's a constitutional right to privacy. There is an implied right to privacy in federal case law in some areas. So as long as it's a reasonable regulation that's a time, place, and manner, which is what we would be bringing forward to you, we think that that would hopefully address the balance between the First Amendment right of the reporters versus the privacy rights of residents.
Thank you. Councilman Toma.
He had a couple of questions. The, the first is, does our police department have its own drones now?
We are in the process of purchasing one. We actually face a different set of restrictions with regards to drone, because we have the Fourth Amendment to contend with, as well as some restrictions that the state has placed upon law enforcement using these devices. So it's interesting, because an unmanned device actually has greater restrictions than two officers in a helicopter. But, you know, it is what it is, and with the Fourth Amendment comes our responsibility to be sure that we're compliant with both federal and state law.
And then with respect to the FAA, do you know what their objection, I, I can't imagine their objecting to protection of privacy. What is it in particular about the LA ordinance, do you know, what they're, other than just they want to, you know, reserve the right to control all airspace? Is there anything particular about the local ordinance that you know that they, that they may have objected to?
The, the city attorney from LA met with every federal agency they could think of with potential jurisdiction over the matter, to include the FBI and federal law enforcement agencies. The only entity that gave an opinion that preemption would probably exist in this case was the FAA. They didn't, they didn't spell out in great detail what the basis for their belief that preemption would occur, other than citing the supremacy clause.
So, so when I, you know, this originally came to my attention, I'm sure everyone here's like, heard about drones and known it's been an issue, but, you know, I think the police, the former police chief has mentioned a few times in the public safety context, and maybe because he has a helicopter background, I don't, I don't really know. So I originally saw this as a, as a public safety issue, which it is, but you're also bringing up the privacy issue too, which I think is important, because I think most people would expect, you know, this thing talks about the curtilage, which is a legal term, I don't know if everyone's familiar with it, but it's, you know, essentially a property, even the parts that are like exposed. Most people still assume that that is private for them. And with drones being smaller and just, you know, the technology getting so much better now, that's going to be less and less the case, I, I think. Just like everything else, I'm sure they're getting faster, getting higher altitude, getting smaller, harder to spot, et cetera. So I think that, I mean, that is a, a big concern of mine. It turns out, I guess from the report, that the LA ordinance isn't as useful, I think, as the League of California Cities' policy recommendations, because these things generally, in terms of the bullet points, make some sense to me. They all, I can understand the reasoning behind all of them. I do take into account what Mr. Williams has said, that I think there, there have to be some exceptions built into it. So for example, I know like the schools, the high schools have done some amazing video work, and they have to have been done through drones, because of just the vantage point that you see with some of the productions they're doing now. I mean, high school kids are doing just incredible, incredible work because of the use of these drones, which have helped a lot of amateurs actually become quite creative filmmakers and whatnot. And for their own events, of course, it makes sense that they should be able to film their own events that are, that are these kinds of things. So I, I think that, that is a valid point. But overall, I, I think this is just going to get worse in terms of the privacy issue. I am concerned about public safety too, because as more people get these, you have like, I can foresee a hostage situation or something going on, where I know that there are means to take care of it, but still, like, I can see curious people, and with more people owning these things, wanting to get their footage, you know, become famous by posting it on social media or something like that, I can see it being a bigger and bigger issue as these things become cheaper and easier to own. So I do think it's still a public safety issue as well. And so I think that some draft ordinance does make sense. I don't have any particular points about, you know, these things, other than I generally agree with the bullet points that you've presented here in the report in terms of what an ideal policy ought to be.
Yes, I, you know, I had some questions too. And one of it was, okay, we're talking about limits on drones, what are the limits on government drones? You know, and, you know, because, you know, we have a right to privacy from government intrusion too, and you, you know, you said you have to contend with the Fourth Amendment. Well, the founders thought that was a good idea, so, you know, it's fine with me. You know, but we had this issue come up, actually in the mosquito vector control district, of which I'm pleased to be the representative of this, I guess, city council, where they actually, and I was stunned, you know, they didn't talk to the board beforehand, they flew a drone over like cities and started identifying pools that were green, that they were going to go, go after, right? You know, and I was just like stunned, because, you know, most people think their pool is probably private, you know, whatever's going on in the backyard, and obviously there are code enforcement issues, but, you know, it was like, wait a minute, are you allowed to do that? And, you know, and so we're having that discussion now, but, you know, what, I mean, can our code enforcement use? Then start just flying around and looking, you know, can animal control start using drones looking for dogs instead of going door-to-door? You know, I mean, what are the legal limits on government agencies, you know, when it comes to stuff like that? The police probably are more structured, because it's more obvious. You know, I know they're able to use drones, obviously, in wilderness areas to look for fires and that kind of stuff, and, you know, that makes sense to cover vast areas, but what are the other restrictions on other government uses of, of drones? Before the animal control people start taking the idea and running and flying with it?
If I could, obviously, the, the law enforcement, Fourth Amendment, you know, the criminal investigation aspect is slightly different than the regulatory aspect. So we do have, there is a little more flexibility allowed to the government in the regulatory context. I, I haven't looked at this issue specifically with respect to, for example, vector control or animal control. I would say with vector control, there's probably a public safety argument that might justify looking for pools that are breeding mosquitoes, for example. You're, especially at a, at a very high level, where you're not, you know, taking pictures of people in their backyards kind of thing. Not clear about the animal control, but I, I think one of the things that we would want to do is when we, if we bring forward an ordinance at your direction, we certainly would want to have more information about what that would mean for not just the city in a regulatory context, but other governmental agencies that may have overlapping jurisdiction with the city.
Yeah, because that would be, you know, I think that would be a concern of mine. You know, obviously, I have a concern about enforcement, because obviously, if you see a drone, you know, it's kind of hard, oh, is that a government drone? Or is, you know, I don't know if that makes people feel better. Or, you know, is that a private drone? You know, what kind of drone is that? You know, unless you shoot it down, you won't really know. You know, what kind of drone? Is it filming me? Is it not filming me? I mean, you have all kinds of issues related to that, that I don't know how to deal with. I do have some of the same questions. You know, Mr. Williams may not know anything about redistricting, but he does know something, you know, at least about dealing with the private things of, there may be private uses where people want to use one to cover something going on in their, their house, or, you know, their, a party, or something like that. And I don't know how we structure some way where it's clear that people can fly drones on their own private property, as long as they don't interfere with, you know, others. And I do, you know, it was kind of interesting, because you said, you know, we have to protect privacy, you know, and we want to limit it where they have, people have a reasonable expectation of privacy, you know, and I agree with that, but I don't think anyone has that at a sporting event. You know, people don't have that at, you know, a rock concert, you know? You know, so how do we deal with educational exceptions? Because I've seen a marching band, someone did a marching band, a drone over a marching band, you know, to see their performance, you know? And, you know, that, that would be illegal under this ordinance. Or the other thing, commercial part of it is filming. We've talked about filming. How do we, do we license commercial filming through our film? How do we, do we license commercial filming through our film permitting? Or, you know, how do we put limits so people know they're being filmed? How does all that kind of kind of work?
With respect to the recommendations concerning sporting events and schools and the other items identified in that section, this was for third parties showing up over a school during school hours and flying a drone.
Oh, yeah, no, that happens in Chino Hills, that's creepy, man, that's creepy.
It doesn't, it doesn't make good sense for a city to permit something like that to occur if we can do something about it. I think the owner exception to somebody wanting to fly over their own property and film, a real estate agent flying over a client's home and filming, a school sanctioned pilot who they know and trust and is using quality equipment to fly over a school event should probably be sanctioned. It's the third party showing up uninvited at these high-risk, high-threat locations and simply flying a device that we don't know if it's going to follow the stop, the sky in 30 seconds and hit five or six people on the way down that we want to put regulation over.
Yeah, and I do think we do have an issue with press and, you know, it's easy to say there'll be helicopters and stuff, but, you know, you know, we're talking about like right now, you know, so, and of course, press is becoming more fragmented, the definition of press, you know, and so just, you know, let's say there's a protest outside this building over, you know, some issue, right? I could see someone from a small press thing would cover it with a drone, you know. And so how do, you know, how do we deal with that, even though it's a government agency? And, you know, I mean, I do think there's issues here that are worth discussing, but I think we have to figure out some of these exceptions, how they'll work. And of course, enforcement, I think, is a huge issue, you know, trying to figure out how we do the enforcement part.
There are numerous code sections in the penal code that despite making certain acts unlawful carve out exceptions for persons involved in First Amendment activities. And there's nothing that restricts the local legislative body from incurring those same types of exceptions.
So I mean, I, yeah, I mean, as long as we start working out some of that stuff, you know, and I don't know, again, like filming of, you know, if someone's making a film, you know, like a crazy ex-girlfriend wants to film above the lakes, you know, they need a film permit, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, as long as it's clear that drones can do the commercial or we have some kind of permitting process for commercial ones, then at least we know those are being done. But, you know, I do think, you know, we got to figure that. And I would like to see what limits are, what the deal is on on government drones before those animal control people start flying around.
I think this is something we need to start working on naturally. It's it's going to be a work in progress as the industry changes on how they're going to be used and as courts start to see items being brought up. But it's something we need to start with. And I'd like to take the approach of starting with the recommendations from the league. I don't know how the rest of you feel. Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, my question's over here is this, okay, and how about the state and the county? Do they have any law and ordinance, okay, already exist?
No. The the only thing that the that exists in state law for drones, there's a small privacy exception that you can take a civil tort against a person who records you in that, but that is it in terms of any enforceability and that's just limited to the civil side.
So basically, basically, right now, the state and county don't have nothing, okay, to restrict this, okay, the unknown flying object, flying around all the places, okay, and there's toys and people, some people own, I think I have one, but I fly one time, I just set aside forever. But the point is this, I think my opinion would be, wait, okay, let's see, because it sounds like extremely complicated due to that you have a, okay, government agency using it, you have a commercial people using it, you have a private sector uses as recreation and fun, you have a small tiny little drone used to just fly over and following you as a selfie. So so there's a lot of things and we're starting to restrict the ordinance, starting to restrict people's right, okay? And and I think, my suggestion is if the state and the county hadn't done anything, should we just wait for them? Why would we waste a lot of your manpower and our time and try to, okay, figure out the fine print about how the government and how the this, how the privacy, okay, what's this and that? I think rather than than doing that, I think just wait the state and county and let us see what they have, then we follow through, I think would be more feasible for our time.
There are some FAA regulations currently on flying them. I mean, there's, I don't think you're allowed to fly them over freeways on a straight line. You're not allowed to, you know, in the commercial, around airports and things like that, you're not allowed to do that at this point in time.
The FAA is very silent on this topic right now. Their limitations are not very restrictive.
Well, they don't allow them over airports, I know that, at this point in time.
That's probably pursuant to TFRs and the same regulations that would fly to other aircraft.
Right, I mean, it's part of right, right, because they are considered an aircraft. So I think they follow the same rules as an aircraft would be.
Yes.
Anyone else? So I don't think we have direction yet.
Mr. Mayor, looking at some of the bullet points here, the one I was on, the UAV operators must maintain a minimum of 25 feet flight distance from any person, including the operator. Right now, someone, they use the little ones to take selfies with them. You know, what?
It would, it's excluding the operator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, actually, I apologize, okay.
So I will, I will move to ask the staff to to submit a draft ordinance to the city council to to review at a future meeting. And I don't know if there's any, you know, points that want to take off. I mean, at the, at the very least, I think that the, you know, recording and photographing, photographing of persons in in private locations with a reasonable expectation of privacy, I think is important, as well as, you know, not flying during the hours of darkness or in reckless or unsafe manner, so. But I would ask for the for the staff to come back with a with a draft ordinance.
I'll second that. So it's been moved by Councilman Toma and seconded by myself to...
Is that any exceptions and stuff?
Right.
Is that also, like, includes, like, the original, like, helicopters and all the, like, the fighters and stuff that were made? We have to, we're just talking about drones now, but remember, they've had their small helicopters, they've had gliders, they've had all these stationary other planes too, before drones. So I think if we're going to have drones in there, we should have something else like that included in it too. Because these are, you can do the same thing with them, you can take a helicopter, I've seen guys...
You can put a camera on them if they wanted to.
Yeah, no, I understand, so we don't say drones, basically say all of these, these ones.
I think your definition ought to come back that that includes like things where they're unmanned aircraft.
Right. Remote control.
Well, now we can have more prompting, maybe, regarding lighter, you know, I don't know.
Well, they're, you know, remote control, I think, is what you're looking at. I think you need to give us, you know, some samples and and put that in there, you know, we'll leave that to your discretion. Is there any other comment?
Save the same plate.
Save the same fireworks that can go into the air. Is there any other comment?
Yeah.
With that, is that enough direction for you?
I think so.
Do we need a vote on that or?
I would say no.
We'll take a vote.
With motion, so yes.
Yeah, we'll take a vote on that.
Well, I want to make it clear, I'll vote to look at some language stuff, but I'm not guaranteed.
None of us are, right. May I have a roll call, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Toma.
Aye.
Wu.
Nope.
Warshaw.
Aye, motion passes for one. We'll now move on to item number 26, which is for consultant services agreement for the preparation of a transportation impact fee study. Who will give a staff report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Our planning director, Jeff Anderson, will give a report.
Talking about the transportation impact fee study, the item was initially reviewed by the city council on February 21, 2017. The council at that time continued the item to allow staff to provide information regarding funds to be received from Los Angeles County Measure M and also the recently enacted Senate Bill 1 called Road Repair and Accountability Act by the state. Impact fees are one-time charges on new development collected and used by cities to cover the cost of capital facilities and infrastructure that is required based on growth. We do have impact fees for certain things now, but traffic is not one of those. The cost of the impact fee study can be charged as part of the adopted impact fees and transportation impact fees can pay for capital, transportation improvements that have a lifespan greater than five years. Staff released a request for proposal on RFP on October 17, 2016. We did send it to 16 consulting firms and it was posted on the city website, sent to 250 subscribers of the e-notification system. The RFP was closed on November 17, 2016. At that time, staff received proposals from four consulting firms. Staff members from Planning and Public Works evaluated the proposals. We reviewed the proposals for completeness, relevant experience qualifications of proposed project team, understanding and approach in providing the requested scope of services and cost effectiveness. Based on the evaluation, staff selected EPS Stantec, who received the highest score. In receiving the proposals, it was clear there's a wide variation in the scope of work proposed by the firms. The preparation of the impact fee study is important as it provides the justification for the needed transportation system improvements, an estimate of the costs to complete those transportation improvements, and a nexus study that identifies the relationship between the needed improvements and the maximum impact fee. It was noted that each firm had proposed time to collect data and estimated costs for needed transportation improvements and costs to prepare the study. Based on the submitted proposals and the need for data collection, staff is recommending EPS Stantec to prepare the impact fee study for the for the impact fees. EPS is a land economics consulting firm and Stantec is a consulting firm with California licensed traffic engineers. Based on subsequent discussions, the fee proposal was modified to increase the time for data collection and the cost estimate of improvements, as the city does not have the required data available right now. So the cost for the study would be $97,000. It is anticipated that the study would take six months to complete. Staff will work with the consultants to prepare a transportation improvement needs list, a cost estimate for the improvements, an estimate of future development, and the nexus study identifying potential fees. The completion of the study will allow the city council to determine if transportation impact fees are appropriate, how much the fees could be, and what impact fees should be adopted. While the study will provide information on the maximum fee the city can charge, the city can choose to create an impact fee for a smaller percentage of the maximum fee. Subsequent to the completion of the fee study, a review will be scheduled for the city council to consider. And at council direction, at that point, staff would then prepare a code amendment to provide for the adoption of the transportation fee. So at the conclusion of the study, there's a two-step process to move forward. In September 2016, the city council adopted several city council goals and objectives. One of those was to build financial health and economic stability in the city. So the, and the analysis of the impact fee is one of the objectives identified by the city council at that time. In addition, in the general plan, there are five policies. One, to maintain and enhance the city's current tax base. Two, to ensure that new development is not a fiscal burden to the city. Three, to invest in infrastructure and improve the public realm. Four, to improve intersections as needed to comply with performance metrics. And five, to work to develop a safer transportation system. In addition, there are several points that are made in the general plan, which I'll just talk about briefly. One, to create a sense of place in the down, in the West Covina's downtown, encouraging higher intensity land uses that allow for walk, a walkable vibrant neighborhood, which will enhance the city's brand. Secondly, over the past few decades, the city's major roadways have been developed with a singular focus on the facilitation of smoothly flowing automobile traffic to to the exclusion of all other needs. While traffic congestion should be generally be avoided, a complete streets approach like that underlying this chapter would ensure that all uses of the city's streets are taken into account in the city's transportation planning process, as well as other important elements of street design, including street beautification and support for commercial development. And lastly, the design of our streets, parks, and buildings affect health-related behavior. So those three things are quotes from the general plan that was recently adopted that sort of support the idea that transportation needs are something that we need to look into. As discussed in the general plan, the city has primarily focused efforts and expenditures of transportation funds to facilitate automobile traffic with little or no expenditure on other types of transportation improvement, improvements like sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic signals for pedestrian, for pedestrians, and bike lanes. As the city looks to the future and what changes are appropriate, the funds to invest in these types of transportation improvements will continue to be scarce. As new development increases demand on the current infrastructure, it is important to address the portion of the improvement cost that should be the responsibility of the development community. Potential improvements are on the screen behind me and include street widening, new traffic signals, traffic signal synchronization projects, modification of intersections and our traffic signals, modification to crosswalks, pedestrian amenities, sidewalk improvements, widening sidewalks, bikeway and path improvements, installation of CCTV cameras at major intersections, upgrades to the city's traffic management center, installation of GPS emergency preemption devices, and updates to the citywide engineering and traffic surveys. At this time, the city expects to receive 1.5 million annually from Measure M and 2.5 million annually from SB 1, and that is based on estimates for the current year, 2017, 2018. As part of the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, which was the previous year, $75,000 in general fund monies was set aside to complete this study. While the city completed a study on public safety, parks and recreation, city administration, and public works impact fees, transportation impact fees, to assist with roadway and sidewalk improvements were not studied a couple of years ago when impact fees were first approved. So it is recommended that the city council take the following actions. Authorize the city manager to execute an 18-month agreement with economic planning systems, EPS Stantec, in the amount of $97,000 to provide consulting services associated with preparing a transportation impact fee study to determine appropriate fees. Number two, to adopt a resolution approving a budget, a budget amendment in the amount of $97,000. That concludes staff's report. Be happy to try to answer any questions at this point.
Are there any questions of staff? Councilman Wu.
So so this transportation impact fee, okay, this for the developer, right?
Correct.
So developer, they want to bring in a project, so, okay, then we might charge them some fee. We have a park fee, we have a left fee, statue fee, this fee, okay, and a off fee, okay, now we, I think we already, last time, we already charged them the impact fee, right? Okay, it's environmental impact fee?
Not an environmental, we have an impact fee for public safety, parks and recreations, parks and recreation, city administration, and public works.
So we're going to add another one, transportation impact fee?
Go for it.
Okay, and and we're going to hire, okay, a consultant for $97,000, okay, one year, right? To...
Six months, six months is what we think, but six months to a year.
So $97,000, six months, to let them tell us, okay, how much we should charge the developer for the fee?
How much is a fair basis to charge a developer for the fee?
But do we need that kind of consultant? Can we just set up the fee? Okay, and have we approved, have we approved, already approved, okay, this transportation fee?
Have we approved last time?
No, we never, right? We haven't, we basically haven't approved this...
They did it before you guys swore in, they approved all the fees, remember?
Yeah, I know, before we swore in, a year and a half ago.
No, the city council, as part of their goals and objectives, have identified this as one of the city's goals and objectives, to have this transportation fee completed.
Whose goal and...
The city council adopted this as one of their goals and objectives.
Not mine.
Yes, but the council as a whole voted for this as a goal and objective for this coming year.
So possible is 3-2, okay?
It is poss, it is possible, it was 3-2. Going back to your comment, we do need to have another party put this together because it has to help validate that fee, because if there's any challenges, there has to be a report substantiating those fees.
Okay, got it. Okay, so basically, we need to legalize to charge the developer, we need to have some kind of legit, okay, consultant to tell us to per, per our city, okay, and... So we won't be challenged by some developers say this unfair. Am I right? But in that way, my point is this, how much fee we are charging the developer? Are we going to be very high compared with all the surrounding city? Or are we, okay, so we are the middle range? So where we at right now? Because it sounds like we are going to add another charge to the developer, okay? We want to bring the developer to come to our city to develop, but we don't want to scare them too much, okay? We're charging so much fee to collect tiny little more fee, and now we lose $1 million of potential developer come to our city to bring the money to us. So I understand the city needs some fee, okay, to pay for all this kind of budget issue, but at the same time, we have to think about, is that fairness? Can we attract more developer to us? Okay, since, I don't know, it looks like we have to approve this transportation fee, which one should we do first? Should we approve the transportation fee, then we spend this $97,000? Or we have to do the $97,000 first, then we bring it to us, okay, and to approve it?
Right, so the study, what we'll do is they'll establish what they think, they'll compare other communities, but they'll also provide you with some guidelines of what that fee should be. And then it's up to the city council to decide what level of a fee that they feel is acceptable for the community. What we as the city staff are recommending is that the council move forward with the study, because this helps put the burden on the development community, because they are the greatest impact on transportation in our community. So a good example is if there's a development at the BKK site, and there's a need for significant infrastructure improvements. This does two things. One is it puts responsibility on the developer to help mitigate some of those measures. One, but two is, as the city looks at perhaps creating these enhanced infrastructure financing districts, this could be a source of money to help those districts to create additional leverage for additional monies for new development in our community. I know that's kind of a hard concept, but for example, if a development, BKK landfill, they're required to pay some development impact fees, and in the future, if we create an enhanced infrastructure financing district, and we're able to leverage some of those monies, we can create more opportunity for more development.
So since we have so many developers, already developed so many projects in our city, so previously, they never paid for this fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and they pay for some other fee, right?
Correct.
So what I'm saying, if we do not charge, okay, the previous developer develops so many projects, including the lake, including the colony, including the, okay, also developer up on the hill, so many, many houses already built, now then they pay for any transportation fee?
They did not, but what ended up happening is the city, in order to make those projects work, utilize our Measure R, our gas tax funds, or other funds that the city receives to mitigate those projects.
So my concern is this, I understand we need to charge more fee, but I do not want to, okay, over gouging, okay, the developer come to our city and create a burden, and nobody want to come to our city to develop. But again, this is judgment, okay? I want to understand, okay, is this fairness, okay, to charge the developer, or this is just another layer, we want to charge more fee and to gouge people?
I mean, we should probably vote on this. I know this will shock everybody that I'm not going to vote for this. But, you know, the reality is, the developer is just going to pass it on to us. So commercial will be more unaffordable, housing will be less affordable, you know, I mean, that's what we do when we pass, I mean, if people think they're developing, you know, out of the goodness of their heart not to make, you know, some money, they're wrong. They pass all this stuff on to the people buying the house or doing the business. So it just makes us more business unfriendly.
Councilman Johnson.
You know, my biggest problem is I have is the $97,000 paid for consultant. The impact fee is one thing, but the $97,000 is, I'm sorry, I just can't accept it.
Do we know what other cities have paid for a traffic study?
We didn't do any research necessarily on that, although we did get four proposals, and this was kind of in the middle. We want to make sure that whoever we hire does the correct analysis and has the correct data. So there needs to be, part of the issue that the city finds itself in when we go through these, we had the same thing, we went to the impact fee, is because of the way we've been working over the past couple of decades, we don't have data, because we haven't been doing any forward thinking, we've just been reacting to things that have come in. So that's one of the reasons that it's higher, because we don't have the data. If we had the data available, then they wouldn't have to create it, but they have to create it, so it raises the cost. The cost can be included in the impact fees, so the cost can be made up for later and can be determined to be part of the charges that you can estimate the cost for. And keep in mind also, when you do the study and you come up with what the fee might be, they might say it's $100, but that's 100%. It doesn't mean the city council has to choose it 100%. They could choose it at 25% or 50%, 75%, some number that might make them more comfortable. And I think that staff could look at this list and see that there's, we're going to get a lot of money in transportation, but there's a lot of deferred maintenance in transportation, and we have set a goal for ourselves in the downtown plan to create some walkable environments, and that's not going to be an easy thing to do, even with the funds that are coming in now. So that is one of the big changes over the past few years that we weren't facing 10 years ago. We didn't have this goal of walkable environments. If you look at some of the, well, I'll point out one that's sort of been, if I try to cross Sunset, if I'm coming out of the courthouse and try to cross Sunset, I've got to cross, and I want to go across the street to the bakery, I got to cross three sections, because it doesn't have a way straight across. Now, that's something I think, if you're trying to encourage pedestrian activity, you need to fix that, and how the city has money to do that, and understanding that developers, when they come in, are going to be building based on the fact that they want people to be able to cross there. So there's, these things are benefits to the development as it goes forward. But at the end of the day, it's up to the council to make that decision, but I wanted you to understand where staff is sort of coming from on these issues.
Well, I guess my big question, because the real difference seems to be in the cost of the data collection. And if you don't have the data, how are they going to collect it? I mean, one of them only wants $8,800, because I guess they figure there's not that much data out there, would be my guess, and they're going to use data from other cities, or?
Well, what we found after we went through this is that many of them assumed we had the data. That's why there's a wide variety. There was an assumption in there that we had the data. So that's part of the issue, because most cities do have more data than the city of West Covina does.
So did, at what point did we tell them we don't have the data?
That was the reason for the change in price after we selected the one, the proposal that we selected.
But that was after we selected it?
Yes.
Because you said, oh, and they needed 2,000 more? I mean, and you said you didn't pick one of them because of the data cost? Well, did we tell them, well, we don't have the data? How much do you want?
We did not. We could go out and do that, we could send out another RFP with maybe more information on that. There were some other concerns there, some of them didn't have a California licensed traffic engineer, and we thought that was an important aspect to this study.
Was that one of the requirements in the bid?
It was in the proposal, yes. I mean, the RFP.
It was in the RFP.
So there was a variety of factors that went into this. We also had, we had the experience, and I don't have the number in front of me, but we also had the experience of the previous impact fee study, which was more or less in the ballpark of where we're talking about, I think it was less, but it was, because the transportation impact fee study is more data-driven than the other types of impact fee.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The only option I am willing to even look at tonight, myself, is to reject all the proposals and send it off on RFP again with all the information sent in them. If not, I can accept it the way it is.
Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor, would the council be interested if we got a survey of how much other cities paid for on their transportation fees? Would that make any decision in the future, or changes on certain council members' minds?
I know I would like to see, you know, what that is for someone who doesn't have one today, and if we can find a city, you know, roughly our size, and see what they're paying. I'm just concerned with the price we're paying when I see these kind of differences in the cost and the data collection.
Okay.
This is a request from Mayor Pro Tem Spence. Requesting the city council to reduce costs and benefits of the city's membership with the League of California Cities.
Yeah, actually, the council already voted on the League of California Cities during the budget process, but I do think there's other entities, and one would be also, there's a different league division of the League of Cities that operates here, and I do think some of these smaller organizations that represent cities in LA County do have a benefit, and I would just like to have a review of the costs and benefits of them, so that the council can look at them. And that is my motion.
Can you ask them to bring it back?
Yes, that's my motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just look at it.
So how much cost is it right now?
Well, the league cost us, what is it?
I think it's around 24, maybe, 25,000?
24, 25,000?
Right.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to, you know, I've been to some, I've participated in some of the other organizations here, and I've seen a benefit, and I also see it being more responsive to some of our needs. It's not as urban-centric as the league, and so I just wanted to have the council take a look at other organizations that we can collaborate with and work with on city issues.
Can we identify those organizations you'd like to compare?
And that would also include, you know, there's a different fee for the division, Los Angeles division.
It's $1,200 a year.
Yeah, that we don't participate in.
No, we do.
We don't participate, not in the league. When did we start paying that?
We've been paying that for years.
No, actually, that's not what they tell me when I go to their stuff.
Well, I can have Jennifer Kwan give you an update, but we've been paying that for years.
That's not what they said two years ago when I tried to participate in a policy committee.
I can tell you we've been paying it.
Well, we need to check on that then. But that would be a good reason to review all this stuff, apparently. Yeah, that would be a good piece to review it, so that's my motion.
And if I can, I just get clarification, what is it you're considering benefits of the membership? So that way, if you want to ask to compare benefits, what are our benefits?
Well, everything that they do, how they function as far as policy and lobbying, et cetera. And you can get that stuff from that council.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Spence, and I think seconded by Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Oh, go ahead.
So are we seeking information about the Independent Cities Association and California Contract Cities Association? Are you seeking information on all of them? Because?
Both of them, and at this point, you already voted on the league and the budget. But the division thing has to be clarified, because I was told we cannot participate in policy, because we weren't paying the league dues.
I can tell you definitively, we have been paying it for at least the last couple of years.
Okay, well, let me know the difference.
Okay.
Well, that you can let me know without.
Do you have another question?
So, you know, I don't need the information of the League of Cities, because I know it's, you know, we've been, every member, every city in the San Gabriel Valley and in LA County, all 88 are members of the League of California Cities. For decades, it's been the leading organization of cities, representing cities, and when I worked in Sacramento like 20 years ago, whatever it was, I mean, that is the organization that you look to, to see what the position of cities was by, you know, bipartisan, et cetera. So I think membership in that is crucial for all cities. They do the trainings and whatnot very good, that I think all of us have probably attended as new council members. They're the most professional of any organization that represents cities. I myself, at this point, am not interested in joining any additional organizations, so that's the reason why I'll be voting no on this.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do they have any city not join the member?
The League of California Cities?
Yes.
Statewide, probably, I'm sure they do.
Just Southern California, like San Gabriel.
No, as Mr. Thomas says, all 88 cities in LA County are members of the league.
Correct.
In LA County.
In LA County. Well, that's not what the motion is. The motion is to look at some of the other collaborative groups that cities participate in LA County. That's what the motion is.
Johnson?
Aye.
Spence?
Aye.
Tomah?
No.
Wu?
Aye.
Warshaw? No, motion passes through to.
Okay, the next item is 22, the SAFER Grant.
No, the next item is 28.
Is it?
28.
Yeah, 28.
Okay, item 28, request by Mayor Pro Tem. Item number 28, request by Mayor Pro Tem. My expense requesting the city council instruct city staff to consider applying for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, which is the SAFER Grant.
Yeah, I don't want to get into big debate about the SAFER Grant again, because we've had plenty of those, but I'd like to move that we instruct the city to come back and, what's the actual motion? Yeah, to instruct the staff to consider applying and bringing back to us for approval or disapproval, the SAFER Grant.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. I'm not going to be voting in favor of this. If you look at the SAFER Grant, the SAFER Grant requires that you hire more firefighters that we have today. It doesn't cover all of their costs, and the city doesn't have the budget to hire more than we currently have. The SAFER Grant has changed from previous, our previous SAFER Grant, when it did some of those things. So I don't see any reason to spend time or expense in looking at this again. With that, yes.
I don't have a problem with it coming back, because I want to see what it is, what it would cost the city more, how much it would cost us if we did. I want to weigh the pros and cons. I don't want to take one person's word for it, or one other person's word. I'd like to have the staff come back with a report. That doesn't mean I'm going to accept it when it comes up, but I'd certainly like to have them come back, take a look at it.
And I'm of the same page. I mean, I think what Mayor Warshaw just stated is accurate, but I think it's probably beneficial for everyone to take a look at the information and see for ourselves what it is. So, yeah, I'll be voting for it as well.
Roll call vote, please. Johnson?
Aye.
Spence?
Aye.
Tomah?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Warshaw? No, motion passes for one. And with that, we will recess back to closed session.
I'm sorry, are there any AB 1234 reports?
Yeah, does anyone have an AB 1234 report?
Do we?
No.
Do we have to go back?
Yes.